Call to order at 7:07. This special meeting of the Board of Education, if you will all rise for the pleasure of this.
United States and other entities, the Republican Party, the Senate, my nation, we are.
All right, thank you, everybody. Dr. Willitt. Getting started, we start out by welcoming the guests that we have in the audience and online. We certainly appreciate your, your interest and attention to our process that we've got going on. For superior information, there is no public participation in tonight's meeting. However, welcome you to next week's meeting, which will be a regular meeting of the board, where there will be both the beginning and the end of public participation. So, that being said, getting started here, just a quick run cap of what we're going to do tonight. If you recall during, at the end of the last meeting, we gave Dr. Willitt the direction to provide a series of scenarios that ran the gambit as far as programs, personnel, percentages, just the budget. The intention was for him to bring those scenarios to this meeting, where we would then take it, discuss, ask questions, pretty much try to answer the question that he had to make with these scenarios. These scenarios are not like in stone. What they are meant to be is a guide, to guide the conversation and kind of get us where we need to be by next weekend. Next meeting, the 14th, Dr. Willitt, correct me if I've missed the schedule. My understanding, at the end of next week's meeting, Dr. Willitt will have to have a product that he can then take to the town, if not immediately after this person.
Right, by town ordinance, what we've tried to do is give as much time as possible to the board. So you've cited meetings up until, up to this meeting. As of the 14th, that night, I have to transfer the budget over to the town manager by ordinance.
So to get there, but to give enough time to do the due diligence, you know, that we need to do here. The intention is to take these scenarios, to discuss, debate, analyze, go around as many times as we need to. Jen made a couple of recommendations on how we can handle discussions to foster that debate back and forth as opposed to just going one person at a time. So while I would ask you during your time, refrain from pontificating, take the time you need to get your, your point across. And if you have something to rebut or to really make a point with what somebody's saying, let me know, and I'll give you a chance before we move on to the next person. The goal, by the end of this meeting tonight, is that we're able to narrow these down to one scenario that we can direct Dr. Willitt to take back and make adjustments to or shift, so that the next week's meeting, we can really dive into it and invoke an approval with this program. So towards the end of the meeting, I'll be looking for a motion that we've discussed. So starting out, if there are no questions, I'm going to ask Dr. Willitt to go through the scenarios. I believe he's made a chart that describes that. Dr. Willitt, if you could pay special attention to what the effects are, both positive and negative, which effects would be realized immediately, which ones you feel that there are opportunities to possibly mitigate them, and all of that information. I know you've got a lot of emails, a lot of questions that have come up during the week. If you could spend some time on that, and then we'll vote to the board for your consideration. Any questions? Dr. Willitt, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. My voice is a little hoarse, so if I'm being too quiet, at least let me know. Sometimes it's hard for me to know that. And for anyone at home, just let us know. The crosswalk, there's three documents that you may find useful. There is the reduction in crosswalk. I have to squeeze this around because it's such a small screen. There are, so you, the board members have access to this. You can look at it while we're talking. The public can see it as we display it here. And as requested for this meeting, to have for this meeting, I have the scenarios that you've requested and the details under each scenario. I've also created, worked with the staff to create a more detailed version of that, which is the fiscal 25 projections, 9.43, personnel added back. That spreadsheet gives you more detail. And then five-year plan, as also we discussed, and I can give you some more details of that, too. So I assume you want the crosswalk first, more or less. So if you are able to do that through your own dashboard, you'll be able to see it a little bit more closely, because now some of you will have trouble kind of straining. In this screen, I'm going to try to expand it a little bit here. So, I'm going to talk from mine, too. So what you have here is, and as people at home, I will try to scroll this over for you so you can see it as well. So you recall that you had requested three scenarios essentially, and a five-year plan discussion. The 9.78 has no staff reductions and maintains current staffing levels. That would be what's necessary to roll into next year with what we have this year. The 8.79 is no staff reductions, but still making program reductions that were part of the superintendent's proposed budget. And that includes the co-teaching, legal services, Alexia, Witten Wisdom Materials. There's a contractual thing for me for conference travel. I wouldn't take it. There's business education, textbooks, library books, iPads, some Fermeetian boards for BGP, the summer maintenance, reduction in staff severance, and special education transportation reductions, as much as we could make for that. So that comprised the program reductions, and that would bring it down to an 8.79 without staff reductions. That, that is part of the superintendent's proposed budget reductions, basically. The superintendent's proposed budget reductions were the 6.98. So that included then the staff that we talked about when that was presented to you. And so the 6.98 included a reduction of one THS ELA teacher, one THS social studies teacher, one THS world language teacher, one THS science education teacher, one TMS computer education teacher, two sixth grade teachers, TMS, one TIS music teacher. One of the positions, we had three that were on grant. One wouldn't be moved over, which was part of that. And then 1.0 THS paraeducator. So that was the, the staff impact of the superintendent's proposed budget at 6.98% with those additional program reductions. The final scenario that was requested is a 4% scenario. The 4% scenario takes the same program reductions and also adds on top of those, and adds actually a few more program reductions. So you see the list gets a little bit longer here. But the staff reductions are expanded in order to reach the four. That would be two THS ELA teachers, one THS math teacher, one THS librarian. Now, on the librarian, you remember last year for some people that were part of the board, librarian would be reduced, there would be a library manager position added. So the librarian at THS is an awesome individual. The position at THS, though, does not teach any classes. So a reduction of a THS librarian at that level, there would be a person that we'd be able to bring in just to manage the resources, the library, and circulation, things like that, but they would not be able to teach. So at the high school, that's why the librarian is reduced, but there, there is also a position added that is less expensive than the librarian, that is a library manager. And that's on the model that was discussed last year. So then, two, two THS science teachers, two THS language, world language teachers, one THS social studies teacher, one PE teacher, THS PE teacher, one TMS world language teacher, .5 a TMS world language teacher, one TMS computer education teacher, two sixth grade teachers, one music teacher. And again, the paraprofessional is discussed and the grant is discussed. So you can see in red, those numbers increase. So the number that were, numbers that were reduced in this 6.98 superintendent's budget are increased in those red categories for the 4% budget. The little paragraph below the 4% budget, people can kind of see this. Sorry, I'm just trying to give everybody the ability to see this stuff. So the paragraph or, you know, a couple of sentences below that explain the library manager piece. And it basically tries to summarize the additional reductions from the superintendent's proposed 6.98 to this are those. So I kind of highlighted it in red so you could see the total overall reductions as part of the 4% and what additional ones are happening from the 6.98 to the four. To go through some of the program reductions, just to cover those, you know, co-teaching, which is an extremely important program for our, you know, for right now, we have a, trying to think of the right term to make it relatable, but we have an achievement gap between special education and general education students. Co-teaching is one of the things that helps us narrow that gap. And so we have actually performed far better now on the accountability matrix and the accountability scores from the state of Connecticut because we are closing the achievement gap in that program. Co-teaching is one of the major programs that is helping that happen. It's also the best way really to, to be working in classrooms with kids. It helps us get far more kids into the college prep classes and program, and it's been very successful in getting kids, far more of them into college prep than ever before. So it is a program reduction of co-teaching from 50,000 to 30,000. And then there are reductions in legal services, the Alexia, online support for students, Witten Wisdom Materials, and that conference, business education, textbooks, library books, iPads that we're going to use for BGP and some of the Fermeetian boards there, summer maintenance, reduction in staff severance, special education, as I mentioned before, to the extent we can. The TAO program would be eliminated. That's a program right now that if you cannot graduate, if you just don't, if there are some things that are preventing you right now from graduating, one of the options for you could be TAO. It's a program that's after hours, and that program helps kids that might otherwise not graduate. Otherwise, their other options are things like Vernon, adult education, things like that, GED programs. So it keeps our graduation rates high to make sure we have a program like that. It also can help us in certain expulsion situations. But it isn't something that is absolutely necessary from the standpoint of there are there any other alternatives. There are alternatives, and that's why it's there. Superintendent, we'll talk about that. Tutoring, sometimes students who are in certain, certain situations, sometimes hospitalizations, things like that. 504, IEP, 504 is a general education designation. Sometimes we have to do tutoring under that or just under what's called RCI, Response to Intervention. SRBI, strategically researched based interventions are all state terms. If you Google those, you'll see what they mean. MTSS, multi-tiered systems to support. Google that, you'll see what that means. These are things that we offer to students who are in exceptional usually circumstances. The tutoring funds for both special education students and general education students helps, help kids that are in situations like that and others, homebound tutoring, hospitalizations, things like that. There are just less opportunity to do certain things for the kids there. Reduction in athletics, that's about 15,000, and a reduction in .5 of an SRO. Right now, we are allowed through two contracts with the town and the state to have two part-time SROs. They are 24 hours each. One of the things I would like to do is pivot us into school security officers that, that we would be able to, you know, staff the schools with. It would be efficient from a dollars point of view, and ultimately, the school security officers would report or get their post-training through the resident state trooper commander. So there are models for this that are working. So this would allow us to still have this, the staff member and maybe more in our school, but we would not be spending as much as we would have otherwise. Plus, the structure we have right now, it's difficult to keep an SRO because we are limited to 24 hours per SRO. And a lot of times, they'll take a job like that, but then they feel like they want more hours and you can't give them more hours because of the agreements. So this would still allow us to have and start the school security officer program. They would still be post-trained, they would still be able to carry firearms, but, and to that extent, they would report to the resident trooper, things like that. But, but they would be, we would be able to, to fund more of them in the long run than we would. So that's, that's something that we would reduce, one of the two part-timers here, but we would still be able to keep that plan going, expand it into the future once it was established. There are some resignations, as you know, that we've accounted into this budget. We had a recent one of what's called a behavior intervention specialist. The person we'd be hiring as a replacement would be an associate behavior intervention specialist that we would pay less. We have that ERF server offset that happened between the two times that we've been talking about this. More ELA textbooks, reduction on individual, we have some money that we can use as, as was mentioned somewhere online here for, it's called Mission Square, but it used to be called ICNA. There's an offset because we're supposed to hold money aside, and we do that for five years. And sometimes people, they leave prior to that. We have a credit back to us and we can use it to offset a budget. That happened this year, so we've offset it. And then other severance, you know, we are making some assumptions about severance and reducing that severance line to a little bit below trend because we don't expect to have too many people retiring or are leaving this year that would affect severance. So we're taking a little bit of a chance there, but it's not by a huge amount or a little below the trend on that, but that helped us, helped us get to the four as well. So that essentially gives you the actual nitty-gritty of who. What it means for programs is world language would end at the middle school. There would be fewer options for world language at the high school. We would have to see what the certifications that are and what the bumping is. Sometimes if you ask me a question about a specific thing or a person, they have seniority, and it matters what their seniority is. So even if you, if we know exactly, you know, it'll be two of this class of teacher, we have to go through the bumping process and sit down with the union and determine who has the highest seniority and to the lowest seniority. It also comes down to if you have two people of equal seniority whose performance was better on evaluations. So it does, I don't know the exact person. It's going to come down to a position or positions, and that's why sometimes it'll be tough to say in world language is it going to be this one or that one. So it'll affect the languages and potentially whether we can offer both, because there's only a certain number of people there, and you know, there's only a certain number teaching French and Spanish. At the middle school, I can tell you, though, that it would be removed from the middle school entirely. So one of the impacts of this would be there would be no middle school world language at this point. There would no, no longer be the computer offering, as you know, of computer science education in the middle school. The sixth grade would be changed dramatically from the team structure to really more of the elementary school structure for sixth grade. That group is a K6 certified group. So there are 712 certs and K6 certs, and then there are some other mixtures in there. There's a very old cert that is 68. But this group would either be moved into TIS as a, as teachers moving over into TIS to be part of the sixth grade, and sixth grade, TIS would run through sixth grade, or they'd be split to a different structure, where there would be probably three groups of two teaching on a, on an elementary model rather than a middle school model. So that, that would be reducing the sixth grade by two and require a change of the structure for that and the loss of team there for that grade. But it would be an elementary structure, just like TIS, or more, more like TIS is. Social studies would mean the loss of electives. Some of the electives in social studies, I can't tell you exactly which electives yet because I'd have to see exactly who's bumped and what the skill sets and training is of the people that are there. But for instance, you know, a possible elective that could go away would be psychology. But I, you know, I don't know which electives, criminology, these are things that are not required by the state of Connecticut, like civics and US history. So you do the requirements and then you have these others. I don't know exactly because I'm not sure exactly which social studies teachers would be bumped out. We have to do a little seniority piece, but that would be, there would be an impact on electives because we can't take away the, we obviously wouldn't want to take away some points of it, but you don't, you can't reduce anything that would be required. Science would reduce, again, any science electives. Yeah, really, what's required by the state of Connecticut. I mean, it's graduation requirements and credits, so you're not going to lose chemistry, but you might see combining, so that standard and CP levels will probably be combined, so that there's an integrated standard CP level. That's mostly what would be happening there, would be the combining of levels to accomplish that with the reduction teachers and in the elimination of certain electives, depending on which certifications are available to us and what electives we have curriculum and so on. I already talked about the librarian. The math would also be, would limit, obviously, our sections. We'd have to either be combining standard and CP, or it may require, depending on, you know, who's trained and what we have, who gets bumped. It could be the loss of an AP, possibly. ELA, same thing, either combining a standard and CP level courses and/or the loss of electives for those. Music teacher, you're already aware of the impact of that. It's been discussed that at this point, there would be no band and chorus in TIS anymore. The first opportunities for band and chorus would be, at least the first opportunities for band and chorus that are through our, you know, regular day school system would be, would be in middle school. You know, people can start things on their home, but as far as our teachers and our group, it would start in middle school. There would be general music education in TIS, but no band and no chorus TIS through the school system. Let's see. The, the paraeducator piece, you know, we're just not going to have the coverage that we need. Sometimes people get concerned about, you know, vaping, things like that. We have monitors and we have people that, you know, are moving through the building to make, to catch things and just have fewer of the people moving through. We'd have to have the admin, there'd be more regular rounds because there won't be the assistance of some of these others that, you know, wouldn't, those kinds of rounds. So, so that's essentially from a flyover helicopter point of view, what the impacts would be. And if you, you know, the 6.98 that was presented superintendent's proposed budget has some of the same impacts because I've talked about those already, but to a lesser extent, when you have fewer staff reductions. To kind of, you want to say, wait a five-year. So also, one of the things that we talked about was a five-year plan. What I want to make really clear is that this is based on the assumptions that you see in the notes, and there's an extrapolation that's much bigger than this. So I'll give you a flyover of it because this is what's digestible in this meeting. But when this was designed, because this project started before you made that request, this was designed on the basis of a 6.98% budget. So if the 6.98% budget was approved by the board this year, then going out into the future, because we got the 6.98, and you've noticed that there were 65 questions on the board's question, Q and A. Doc, I got vast majority of those completed, and the rest I'm still trickling in. And one of them was related to, you know, looking out future-wise. And so this ties into that, too, that if we got the 6.98, then we could maintain services and not reduce staff and other things with a 2.92 the following year likely. Unless we got some significant surprises, and you have to remember that this is based on our assumptions right now. So instance, if we get two or three or four more students, special occasions need to be outplaced into the district at the last minute, you know, that could impact this figure. But that outplacement is 100,000, so if three moved in, the impact would be 300,000 or a portion of a percent. So it has some variance, but it's not massive variance. If we got a 6.98 this year, the following year could be a 2.92, then a 4.48, then a 3.22, and a 3.21. So this is, this gives you an example that if we get a certain amount of support in a year, how it can affect the other years in a cascading way. Other things to consider, which I did, we've talked about a little bit before. Budgets can be impacted in a positive direction by relationships with other districts where maybe some kids come here for high school. You know, expanding our open choice, you know, I, when I started it, we said we would do five a year. If the board's willing to allow me to expand that, I could seek to expand that program, which also has benefits in many different ways. Another thing is reevaluating the energy program. That can also have an impact. So these are things that can also have positive impacts on board budgets going out into the future. These budgets are set up, or these projections are set up with what we know right now. And so you can see how an up year would help the next year be able to be accomplished without as high of a one. And over the next few years, we wouldn't have to reduce staff or materials, at least not in a major way. If we got the 6.98, those are the year, that's what we could project to have to use. Again, it'll vary a little bit because, you know, we don't have a complete control. But that's based on current contracts, transportation contracts, current bargaining increases. I'm doing the pause. There is one other document in there in case you want to see the greater extrapolation.
That, this one, that's.
So you, you have access to it. There is a more detailed version of, of the Russell.
So people put the, the chart back. Thank you for the help of you, thank you for doing that work. Moving on to discussion, I think I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll speak for just a moment. You know, the, one of the reasons, and thank you, Jim, the last meeting, bringing up the five-year plan, you know, and creating that, at least initiating, is because, you know, like we've talked about, the budget, budget season is not just the two months that we have here where we try to put it from the superintendent's to the one we send it to them. It is something that we do and have to make a concerted effort to work the entire year. You know, and that, that five-year plan, we'll start to see there that Dr. Willitt has developed in just a brief amount of time, a lot of opportunities that if we really put attention to, if we really work with the town, work with our neighboring districts, have an effect going down the line. In my opinion, we haven't done a lot of that. We've been very focused on what we do here, and then once budget season's over, at least personally, we do a little dance and we, we wait for the next one. The numbers that we're seeing now show that that can't continue. You know, we, not necessarily we, but we're, we're in a position now where just staying the same requires almost a 10%. And the superintendent's recommended budget, which is usually our starting point, already includes some staff reductions and some program reductions. It's my opinion that some of these hard questions, some of these hard discussions, you know, have come too late, but we're here now. One of the things that I personally believe is that, and I'll draw attention to what was it, the creative preschool, and Dr. Willitt and I were talking about that the other day, that my daughter did. Said one of the budget seasons of that had to be one of these. And a short time later, Dr. Willitt and his staff figured out a way to not replicate it, to at least put some of those opportunities back. There have been a couple of other opportunities where, you know, they've found ways of making it work. And that's, that's an absolute testament, Dr. Willitt, to, to your staff. And I believe with a focused attention from the board assisting that, we can amplify that ability. I think we're going to have to, because looking at some of these, you know, looking at these numbers, we're at the point where we're going to have to say, how do we make it work with less money? How do we fulfill the requirements that we have to give to our students, to our children, without asking for amounts of money that just can't be supported? I don't believe that we can give a higher quest to the town and let them walk it down. I think it's up to us to turn to, to our experts, to turn to Dr. Willitt and his staff, and not, not direct him to do particular things, you know, and not say, keep this person or keep this program or don't do that program, but instead to give the direction and let them figure out how to do that. A couple of the points that, Dr. Willitt, you had mentioned in some of our conversations, for example, that some of the effects of these reductions can be. that some of the effects of these reductions can be minimized through the scheduling changes, through some really detailed attention on how we do certain things, do some extra efforts that, you know, have to be done by, by admins and staff. So I guess without, you know, violating my own request and continuing to pontificate, my lean at this point would be that we start at something like the four percent. And start discussing that and how we, you know, personally I'd like to start there and put the music back in the, back in. That, that's, that's my thought. That's why I said, obviously there are eight of us. And we'll, we'll look at that at the end, but that's what I said. That being said, we'll go ahead and start again. If you've got something that somebody, you'd like to comment on something somebody had said, let me know. I'll give you a chance. Otherwise it's fooling around. Dan, you want to start? I'll start down there again.
First of all, there's so much to digest. Thank you, Dr. Willis, putting this together. I know there's a lot of things to review. And discuss. Of course, no staff, and I guess I'll start with, before I came to this meeting tonight, I went to Big Y to get supplies for TCU appreciation tomorrow. And it made me think about what I was doing for TCU appreciation and how as a board member that I can do my best to appreciate our students, our staff and educators to be afforded the opportunity to provide an excellent education to the students upon, but also to be an education for the students at home. It just was an interesting thing that I had at the White House. I guess. I appreciate you throwing it out there, the four percent to start the conversation. You and I are opposite in respect of shocker now. But I guess in order to kind of stay online, we were talking about people asking different questions and then people bouncing things off. So one of the big things that kind of stood out to me, Dr. Willis, one that I'd like to discuss a little bit, would be specifically the sixth grade class or the incoming sixth grade class, sub fifth graders. They're going to be greatly, there's going to be a lot of changes for them. The middle school's already one of the largest changes. People go through social, emotionally, educationally, it's probably one of the most awkward years of our lives. And then it's changing that structure. I struggle with it. I looked at the class sizes for sixth grade, they're 150 currently. And then our incoming classes, 146, so it's only four students less, but we're talking about reducing it by two educators. So I, I get concerned about the class size. So I guess my, my statement's going to be longer than the end of the question. But then if you look at the next five classes, five years, the fourth grade, third grade, second grade and first grade, you go to 168, 157, 148, 183. So we have a differential this next year of four by two teachers, but then we go on to between 10 and 20 more students. So this fifth grade class, although they'd be the first class impacted, the fourth, fourth, first, the fourth grade classes are going to be packed tremendously, specifically in class size. So can we talk a little bit about what that looks like, Dr. Willis? Because that's very concerning. Four kids minus two teachers and then you got 20 kids in a couple of years increase.
So any kind of reductions, it's not about what, you know, clearly reductions have negative impacts, you know. So there's no way of mitigating that completely. So when you're looking at, you know, where currently that K five zone has extremely high class sizes. And you've seen.
All the way through kindergarten.
Yeah, and they, they are high and they're of a certification class that K six can't transfer seven, 12 certs down to that area. You can't make any more cuts to K five's area. It's already in space that is about as much as any of them can actually manage. So the reduction, the majority of any reduction, if we're going to have to make it, would have to be in that seven, 12 grade, six to seven, six to 12, seven to 12 grades span. Reason why six here is part of the picture would be that, you know, there's a model that you can use with that grade that exists already in fifth grade. There are variants of that model that can be used. So there's, that reduction can be made there. That actually does not in a, in a way that is desirable because there's, again, no, no reduction is completely desirable. It would put them in the same zone as, as great as currently, maybe a little less. So it would be a class size of 24, a lot of class sizes right now in fifth grade are 25.
But, and I appreciate that, but then it's even going to increase even more. Cause you go from 146, sorry, I don't know how to read me that. You go from 146 to 168 a year and then down to 157 and then 148 and then up to 183.
So one of the things.
That's a big jump in 146 to 183.
That 183 is, is.
It's a huge class.
Big class and, and I, and then to give kudos to, and that's accurately predicted. Move up to that a few years ago, people on the board didn't, and I had some skepticism over it, or not the Asian number that they predicted. So again, I, you know, I always find this difficult because I, you know, I'm not feeling great about things. We have to make reductions, but the K six certification area means that we can utilize all teachers within that scope and move them around as needed. So if that ends up being, if that grade ends up going to TIS as part of that school, any teachers within the scope of K six can be moved around by the, you know, to match the class sizes for them.
So you're saying that we wouldn't. So there's still a reduction in the, in the, in the structure of sixth grade. And it's still a difference in what the, the, the sixth grade kids in the middle school are doing versus what the seventh and eighth grade kids are doing.
So.
And then my, my concern is, and I get that you say the K through six certification is, but you move someone who's been doing kindergarten to sixth grade, that's not necessarily their specialty although certified. So it's, we have the professional development days that we've had over the years that they're maybe not focusing on that respective development for the first grade students. I guess it's just, it's such a big year, it's such a big amount of change they're going through in this school and then changing that structure that's already going on throughout the rest of the school. And not only just the structure, but reduction into teachers when you have that bubble of kids over the next five years. That's just going to be, this, this next year's going to be a larger fossilized, the next year's going to be a margin, the next year's going to be the margin and, and so on, so forth. It's just a snowball effect.
The district's increase in enrollment is happening in the lower grades, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So when those kind of, those first graders are in sixth grade, that class size is huge.
But when you look at the entire impact across the district, K is 140 this year. So they fluctuate and you can move staff from one grade to another to accommodate that entire K six factor. So in the future, we, we would move teachers around. If we went with our five year plan and there are no additional reductions over those five years, we could move the existing staff around as the bubbles rise and fall accordingly. I, I worked at the middle school as principal. I, I hate in any way to see teeming not happen and not have that model. But I'm not in a position of, you know, I'm in a position of relative impact. So, you know, we can make some changes. If the, the alternative question to what you're asking is where else would that happen? And if you're looking at these, the impacts on the high school are already very large. So I don't know, we can't go below six. And the impacts on the high school and combining sections, and again, we're not, we're not, you know, an EAS year. And, you know, that, that is something that during EAS, it's just the timing's not fantastic. I don't want there to, I have to balance the impact as best I can, given the directives that you're giving.
Right.
So that's the, I mean, trying to answer that was, that's why it didn't be sixth grade and not another one out of the high school.
That just brings me to my next thing. And I, I mean, I, I think you answered it. Obviously I don't enjoy your answer. It's, those kids are going through major changes and it's going to be a major disservice to have larger class sizes, especially with social, emotional health and well-being. We talked about every single administrator and educator that I talked to in the rounds talked about social, emotional health and anxiety and stress and changing a model. We're having it different than the rest of your peers. Even looking at the anxiety with our educators that are being moved in an area that's not their expertise. Then maybe they've had 20 years of professional development, but not in that respective category. I mean, a second grade teacher, although a little certified in year six, is a very different education teaching. So I, I, I don't think I have a question. It's just more of a statement. I guess I thought. And then I think the other two things that are standing out to me, and then I'll yield the floor to somebody else because there's a lot to discuss tonight, would be the music at TIS. I think we heard a lot of folks in our community and a lot of folks that came here in the room was students, current, past and future students that, they talked about why music and arts is so critical to their educational development and the future of that. So I think we'd be doing a disservice eliminating programs such as that. And then world language, you talked about it, TMS, completely removing entirely, correct?
Right.
And then.
Well, it depends on the.
Well, I'm sorry, the, the one model that you were.
Well, you, you, in your four percent model, that is correct.
Correct. So you have a world language, so then that would leave us with one world language that students could take at the high school for their required three years of a world language. They only have one option. Is that correct?
The, the middle school would not have any. The high school, we'd have to see how it pans out. I mean, it's possible that both would stay, but there would clearly be a reduction in world language teachers. Now to compact the number, so where that might end. And again, until I see the bumping, I can tell you how many, but I can't tell you precise impact. But it could either affect the number or the level. So right now, you know, if you go up through level four, you know, we may not offer anything beyond what's required for college, for instance. You know, we'd have to look at what, what happens when we go looking at who's bumped, who's got seniority, who doesn't.
So I guess the concern that I have with that is not only just eliminating an opportunity for a program, but then let's, let's say the programs are there, listed or not. Then you have students that have to hurry up and register for the class because how many offerings are we going to have? And is it the first student that gets, that gets on the list, get that? And then who's that last student that's cut off that doesn't have that opportunity? I, I just think that these are opportunities to educate, to cultivate the whole student. Those were just, I didn't know I was going to go first. I wasn't, sorry. And I don't, I know other people probably have some similar questions that I have, but those were the, the high level ones on my list that I wanted to discuss. And I think that we'd be doing this service to our students if some of these critical programs, especially at young age, the awkward middle school age, and not giving our, our high schools the opportunity to be competitive and having a world language, it's a quite, that's a requirement. And then if it's, if we're over our class size, then they can't even sign up for us. Then making this, so, I don't know. It's a struggle. Just increases our class sizes and opportunity for.
Thank you. I'll fill you in.
Yeah, to your first point about class sizes with sixth grade, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding superintendent, that with changing the, the, the program or the way you do things, the class size won't increase with the reduction of teachers because of the, of the type of program you're running?
No, it'll increase because there's fewer teachers for the ratio of students.
Okay.
But it's going to be closer to what they're dealing with in fifth grade. It's, I can't take more from the high school than what we're doing. And I can incorporate the K six spectrum when we look at over the span of the next few years, where we move around the teachers. So if you have a year of 140 in K and you've got a certain number of K teachers, you might move one of them to one or two or, or six. You wouldn't want to make a leap of someone from K to six, however, they wouldn't be necessarily prepared for that. So the point is that, you know, we have a little flexibility in that range. And as the reductions at the high school, we don't want to take more from there. It's already happening. So it's trying to balance it out. Those class sizes would be about 24.
And what are they about now? 24?
They would be in the 20.
So 21 or six, three, six, three.
Yeah, what's sixth grade right now? Well, yeah, what's fifth grade right now?
The fifth grade is mostly in enrollment report, like fifth grade has a number of sections that are at 25.
Okay.
This one would be, you know, they're currently in sixth grade. You're looking at something more in the 20 area for sixth grade now, but it would go up to 24. And in the fifth grade right now, to give you an example, fifth grade has class sizes of 20. I mean, these are different teachers, so 25, 25, 25, 25, 24, 23. Would look more like that.
Just to add to that, so we received several emails, I don't know, not secretary, but maybe five or more from current parents of fifth graders who said that the class sizes that they're at now, which are going to be similar to what they'll be next year now, are detrimental to their student. And they gave a lot of reasons why those high class sizes are detrimental to their students. So they were actually looking forward to going into sixth grade and having class sizes like 19, 20, which is what they have right now. And instead, with removal of these two teachers, they will be in the same boat that they're in, that they feel is detrimental to their students as they transition into middle school and all of the fun and the hormones. And as our administrators told us, the extreme anxiety, self-harm concerns, et cetera, that they're seeing in the middle school. So we are not helping those children at all, I do. That's my follow-up.
I want to say to that point, I think it's a great point. We're also, a lot of those responsibilities are being put onto other people within our buildings. And so not only the kids are not being, I won't say ignored, but I mean, yeah, they're, they're, they're essentially being ignored. That's how I feel about it. But we're also sort of putting that responsibility of, hey, this impact, this is going to have an impact on that child. Who's going to take care of that? And unfortunately, we're also cutting those types of positions in here as well. And so I just wanted to add that there's an impact on the students, but there's even further impact then to staff as well, who work with one another on said students. And so I just wanted to add that to the end of.
Yeah, just question, and apologies for my naivete this first year, but just looking back and thank you, Dr. Willis, for kind of answering my question in this, the discussion board. But just while we're on top of like personnel, when we're thinking about the number of students or number of personnel that we're actually reducing in the 6.98 budget, I think from our conversations, if I'm getting this correctly, like 70%, like seven out of 10 are teachers that are resigning, teachers that are potentially, there's open wrecks, things like that. So just last year, when a proposed budget was 6.98 as well, and then you got 3%. Like with those reductions, did we have similar personnel reductions? And like, was there a mass exodus or firing of 17 teachers as it's proposed this year? Cause like, did we lose 17?
Well, we have a teachers where we lose positions. I think that this question comes up, right? Whether the position or the teacher, like a human being or the position. So there are positions in here that are, that the individual involved might be able to bump into another position because of a retirement. But I mean, so that, that being, you know, in and of itself, there probably are, I can't remember. I'd have to go back and look at exactly somewhere in five to six within the superintendent's proposed that would do that. But it's about the program. So regardless of whether that person, I mean, you do try to not have people lose livelihoods if you can. But for instance, the program impact would be that combination of a standard and CP class with now, you know, more kids in two combined sections of bearing skill levels. It would be in the loss of the higher end of language. They wouldn't have that fourth year or whatever. Or in the loss of the number of choices. For instance, the example that Mr. Oak gave, I did create that and worked with the FRC to create a preschool, but that's not taught by a certified teacher, can't be used for credit against, you know, other things. And it's basically an internship program. So I was able to create with their help something, but it doesn't, it's not of the same level of what it was, you know. So there are, there's going to be people that are bumping into positions that have retirements, but that won't, for instance, in that budget save the music program at TIS. So it's about, you know, the question you're asking is, you know, generally you try to prevent people from losing livelihoods to diversity if you can, as long as it doesn't compromise the integrity of the education program or children's needs. But these are programs that are disappearing. And these are programs that the kids come. And these are programs that the kids coming up won't have.
Right.
And that, that is the same, that answer applies to what you're asking. It's, you know, those people, there are programs that disappear.
Yeah, I think I understand, but like, was it proposed last year when it was basically a seven percent ask last year? It was asking for seven. Were these personnel reductions and programs on the chopping block as well and now?
Five-nine-two last year and it was kicked around by the board and there were things that, that like librarians and, you know, in fact, I, didn't I post what the superintendent's ones were?
Yeah, you did. Twenty-three to twenty-four was six-nine-eight, twenty-two to twenty-three was four-point-nine-four.
Okay. So that last year was like four-point-nine-four, but it went up and down. So I don't think it was seven, but you know, the thing is it goes up and down based on the board. And the board's conversations last year, that, that, that was up and down based on what they were talking.
Yeah.
The librarians were part of it last year and had that gone through, you know, you wouldn't have the librarians who'd have library manager. So there, there are impacts. Those people want to teach classes. My job is to do the best that I can to maintain quality of education, given the circumstances you hand me. You know, and so that's what I'm trying to do, but you know, the, the, that question about somebody not losing livelihood, you know, of course, but. It's really, I would encourage you to look more at what programs exist or don't exist because of the, you know, because of the reductions that occur. And then try to make those decisions accordingly, based on your values.
Alright, thanks.
Just think part of what you were asking, tell me if I'm wrong here, but did we actually lose things last year? So we did, we, we lost a person and a position in T H S business. We lost a person and a position, T H S math, T M S math coach, it was how it bumped around. We lost childcare program, um, at the high school and the teacher that went along with it. We lost the road program, the middle school and the teacher, the para who ran that, who went along with it. And those are just off the top of my head. And when we discuss implications, I can tell you that losing a math person directly impacted my child. Cause it led to an extreme, extreme class sizes that I'm still, still dealing with. So. Yes, because we didn't get what we need last year, we definitely saw losses to programs and to positions. And yes, I do believe that many, 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 many students were impacted by it.
Just a comment and then, you know, we need to ask your questions. So, skeleton. And I just want to point out, Dr. Willett, I think you articulated it well when you said. That, that it's up to you and your staff to figure out the, the best way of making this work within the given conflict. And regardless of which of the scenarios what was chosen, we as a board have the opportunity to, to move it a bit. You know, to the point that if the six point nine eight or the four percent were what was chosen, the direction we can give is do that, but save. This protect, for example, as I mentioned earlier, do the four percent, but protect the musical, you know, those kinds of things. So we, we can still, you know, Dr. Willett has gone through and done a great job of trying to anticipate where minimum. The minimal impact would occur. But that's still, we can adjust vector a bit if needed.
Can I ask one more thing? And maybe Dr. Walker can clarify too. With some of, we used grant money and E R F funds to save some of our educators or programs, if you will, last year. But now as we've, you know, in F F C though, those are obviously recurring. So that goes back into our budgets. So even when we put money, grant money or different monies from other places in there, we still have to sustain that within our budget. So that's also impacting, you could probably explain it a lot better, Dr. Willett, than I, uh, with that, but that also impacts kind of where we are today.
And one other point that Dr. Willett made when he gave the initial budget presentation. Is that his initial proposal. Assumed that we weren't buying anything forward. So, you know, to your point, previous years, we've used the E R F, we've used other funds to try to either pre-buy or. Fund, so it didn't come directly out of our budget, uh, and previous budget proposals, that was included. That's not here. So while you don't see, you know, that, that didn't cause some of the massive gains that perhaps in the other things, it certainly did raise something that's why you're saying.
Yeah, um. I have one to say, I just don't know where to start. Um. I'm not going to use words. I don't, I don't think it's worth it. Um. To be brutally honest, this is horrific. This is bad. For those that care about numbers, the numbers don't lie. One point seven million over eleven years of an increase. If you look at budget question six, and the, our comparison to our district, to other schools in our district regional group, we're the lowest. We're below the average. With eleven years, we're looking at Talon, first summer, first Ellington, first Suffield, first Rocky Hill. By the way, these are the same districts we can, we use when we do contract negotiations. They're the closest comparisons we can get. We're the lowest. We got here. Over. By digging this hole these eleven years and there's almost every single thing on these lists. Are detrimental to either my child or someone I know. So many, many, many children. You know, respectfully, starting with four percent, let's just say that where we've been, and we're just going to keep digging the hole. When it comes to, um. Talking about, you know. The town. And again, respectfully, physically. Our purview. Is to do what is best for students. So if anyone's going to propose a cut tonight, I want you to tell me how that cut is best for our students. How our students are going to do better without that program or without that position. That extracurricular, because that's our job. And we haven't been doing that for eleven years, which is why we've dug this hole. And we've got to find a way out of it. The town doesn't necessarily need to raise taxes. In order to provide the Board of Ed or any of their departments an increase. The town's fund balance right now is at twenty point five million dollars. And we have been told for years that we can't touch that money for stuff for every cent of the sun. It is now. At nineteen percent and the policy. Is ten to fifteen percent. So they are over what are, what they are supposed to hold in town and fund that. The tax stabilization fund was brought up during the audit review for the town council. When asked how much money in there could be used towards budget, there's three hundred thousand dollars that can be used towards budget. The Santini project was mentioned. It's the tax benefit from that is expected to be three hundred thousand dollars per year. Revenue in town. There's Starbucks coming. There's some other businesses coming. The town likely has or is going to forecast what their revenue is going to be one year out, five years out, ten years out. Why would we not tell the town what our students need? And let them look at what they can do for us, not for us, for the students, for the district, for our district. That has for the last eleven years done less than our surrounding districts. I think it's time we work with them and we ask them to look at these things. We just did our goals, but I think they're not finalized yet. How are we making these kinds of cuts supporting our goals? Why? Cause we have one in here that says a responsible budget. Responsible budget, whoa. That's not responsible means. It means that we're meeting the needs of our students. How does making these cuts support portrait of a graduate? It doesn't. Some of these specific things. Are going to sink students. Code, loss of co-teaching. Combining college prep and standard. That will sink my child. We'll be very clear. Who's not I P? And legally needs to be handled appropriately and doesn't utilize para. I guess they'll be trying to utilize the para, which is going to cost money. And I would assume lots and lots of other parents are going to have to go the same route. It may actually be less physically responsible to do some of these things. Just like some other things we've seen in the past where we thought we were being physically responsible and creating larger problems. We really have to be careful tonight.
You had mentioned, Dr. Willett. Opportunities. Ending Board of Ed approval for expanding open choice. Why hasn't that been done in the past? Why haven't we expanded that?
There is, uh, information, uh, dating back on the super tenant site that kind of talks about the history of where it started. When we started, we were limiting it to five seats a year coming into kindergarten. Um, so that's, that's what we said we would do and that's what we have been doing. That could have and does and did have a trajectory that's helped us out a bit. We actually have forty thousand percent dollars that we've been able to use to offset things now. But, um, we were impacted by the, uh, birch grow. Uh, primarily foundation piece because no one really wanted to send their kids into portable, you know, and then COVID and so we had a couple of tricky years. But if I can expand the number of seats, um, then we can look at, um, doing some things differently with preschool in the long run. Then, um, we could have mutual benefit of having more children in the open choice program.
What does each one of those seats bring in, uh, and come on?
Well, so in the superintendent's proposed budget, uh, one of the last pages talks about that. And it's, uh, at a percentage of, of attendance. As each, as this, as it becomes a greater percent of your population, the amount that you get increases exponentially. So, um, it can, it can get up to hundreds of thousands of dollars. Even I know districts where millions of, uh, million dollars more. Which can make a big difference in a budget season.
Sure.
One dollars, three percent, right? For, you know, for, uh, and, and to speak to the value of the program, it helps provide, you know, really important, uh, skills for kids. Across the state of Connecticut to be able to be in schools together. Uh, and so it's a, um, very beneficial program. We also get the benefit of many, um, program offerings. That RAC offers when we are, you know, in greater and greater partnership. Um, they'll send staff and resources to assist as well. So it, it has a very positive benefit for districts. But, uh, we would need, you know, to be making a large commitment here. And it would take a, we'd have to make some investments, but then it would have a overall return over time.
Is, is that, is it realistic to increase that program? For the, the, the twenty-four, twenty-five year? Or is it too late?
It would be like a five-year kind of thing, sort of like this, that, you know, that we would be looking to increase it gradually. And look at expanding our preschool offerings so we can attract more children into the program. Um, sometimes families will be more apt to come when, uh, if I have like my, my kids, uh, were separated by a year or two apart, you know, the younger side here. Two youngest and, um. You know, if I, if I'm sending one of them and they go to preschool and the other one went to K. Then I might be more apt to send them to a district that's doing that than to split them up. And so we have, you know, we expand that a bit, then we probably get more kids coming. And that would have a mutual benefit. So. Did I answer, did I answer that?
Yeah, thank you.
So there's some pivots we have to make, but it would have a long-term positive benefit for everybody involved.
Okay. I think, um. Uh, I'll speak for myself. I think seventeen and a half teacher positions is, is not okay, uh, by me. So we've got to find a way around that. You know, I see those, those two sixth grade teacher positions are in, you know, the original budget that you proposed to us. So, so that, that hasn't changed. In what, what you've given to us. But just, just for a point of clarification, in, in the original budget. Um, you, you, you say that there is a high school world language teacher that we're losing. That's, that's not accurate. It's actually a middle school. The language is going to be affected in the middle school, not the high school. In your seven percent, in the six point nine eight percent.
The lowest, it goes to the lowest tenure position.
Right.
And so now it would be, you know, it, so at the time that we're talking about that, that's the current French teacher. At the high school, that's the lowest tenure position. That would be the person that would be eliminated probably.
So.
In that first scenario there, it was a high school person that would be on it.
So if, if, if that six point nine eight percent budget cuts, we're losing French in high school.
It depends on the certifications of the other staff. So there are, there is a, you know, there are, there is a teacher right now in middle school who teaches French. But we'd have to take her out of the middle school to teach at the high school.
Is she certified for high school?
She's certified, but so it, it depends on, do you, you know, what we have at little schools. You have to look at all the certifications and. I think the conversation you're referring to is you, you were trying to get me to tell you who this would be. And I was trying to guess whether it would be somebody who would lose their livelihood or not. And I think the answer I gave you is that this person is a French teacher at the high school. Which is who that person would be, the lowest tenured person is at the high school, but it depends on how many people you're cutting. So that, that person would be your one point oh F T U reduction at the high school. But, um. The middle school has one point five people running their program. So in the four percent, you're losing all one point five at the middle school. Plus the, you know, the two at the high school. And that, one of those two would probably be the French teacher. You have to look at the certs. If we're not offering it at middle school. Then if we still have a person certified, we would have the high school to do it and still have French, but you might not be able to offer. The higher levels of, you know, like the foreign level four or something.
The only reason why I ask is I think in one of it and maybe in the first, uh, budget meeting, um. You know, we did clarify that we would probably be able to bump that middle school teacher up to high school. So in fact, we more than likely would not lose it in high school, would lose it in middle.
Well, you'd lose it. If you bumped them, if that person goes up, then you have only point five at the middle school.
Right.
So a half, a point five position for all world language for all three grades. You know, so yeah, it's still a point five there, but it, it all depends on where they shift, you know? And with a, a, a cut as deep as four percent, then I can give you a definitive answer, let's say the middle school, because the one point five are completely out. It doesn't matter who we're bumping where for any of it, right? But that, that's the hard part about some of these is, you know, the bumping pieces. You know, librarian, for instance, that's a terrible loss and, um. You know, a, a year from now or two years from now, though, if there's a library manager there and there's circulation, people might say, well, that happened a bit, you know, but, but it did. There was certain program losses there. There's no librarian there anymore. And, and there are programs that she runs and does that are, you know, meaningful and many people know that. So you who are, you know, in the school and are, you know, going through it, so, um. You know, so I, I try to give you the best possible answer I can. There's definitely no, I'm not trying to, look. Even if you look at the superintendent's proposed budgets, I'm not proposing crazy budgets. I've always proposed budgets that I felt like we needed to propose. And they've been high, you know, high, uh, four-nine-four was the highest prior, I think, ever to the one that's now. So I only ask for, you know, what, you know, what I feel like we need to make to keep the system going the way that you want me to. Or the way you would want. And even then, um, that, there are things that to, it do. Prevent some of the offerings from happening when we do that. But I, there's no, I'm not trying to, you know, sleep you in any way. Trying to answer as accurately as I can with the information I have.
Right. Is there anything that, um, are there any opportunities that you're working on for additional revenue? I know you had talked about a couple of things, just waiting for board approval to kind of move forward on stuff. Is there anything that, that you're working on that would, would potentially bring in additional revenue? Before, uh, this budget goes into effect?
Well, you know, the, the, before it goes into effect parts, the hard part, because. You, you know, I am working on things. Um. It's out of my control whether those things would happen before, if they would happen. So for instance, if I'm looking to see if other districts would like to send students to Talon. It has a lot to do with what those other districts think or competitive they think we are, um, versus the other options they have. So, you know, um. This wouldn't be a good thing to talk about at that time, but, um, but there, you know, Talon has advantages and, um, there are some things that. You know, I, I'm looking into that could come to fruition, but it would be, be responsible for me to tell you that with any certainty for that for next year. What I, what I can tell you is, you know, that five-year plan is based on some solid assumptions. And that, you know, we are able to get partnership with the town, um, things we have talked about, reassessing the energy situation. Um, looking at, um, that open choice piece. Those things are real and they're tangible. The, the, of those three, the one that's going to take the most effort and some chances. the high school tuition piece, because we're not going to be the only people out there looking to do that. But it's not impossible, and I do have conversations happening right now that put us in the arena at least, like we're in the game. Whether we'll win or not, I don't know, but we're, we're definitely in the game on that. So the other two are more tangible. There's an opportunity for energy reassessment. There is open choice.
Well, I like that you're being proactive about that high school piece. We've talked about that a couple of times, the tuition piece, so. Thank you for being proactive about that.
Sure. You know, and we have the staff, we have done amazing job running programs that are cost avoidance. Like Talon Transition Academy and even without those, those programs would result in hot placements that would require far more impacts. So there's two prongs to it. It's the tuition and trying to pull in, and it's the offsets everywhere we can try to offset. And still provide a quality program, better program than they might have received otherwise.
Oh, yeah. Kind of going back to just Jen's point. Just makes me really nervous, I would say, just putting the onerous on the town to utilize other funds and not just continuously increasing taxes. Like, I'm just curious to hear more about how we can direct the town from Board of Education to utilize those funds, just because looking at the actual numbers, it, it's one point seven one percent increased average throughout the last eleven years or so. It seems like since I was in school at Talon, like the mill rate was twenty-nine and now it's thirty-seven or so. So it seems like even just with a small increase to the majority of the town's budget here at the Board of Education, if we start now looking at a seven percent, five percent, four percent increase, I don't, like, I don't understand what that impact would be to the mill rate, even though it's already gone up eight, nine points. But do we have any type of power to ask to utilize those funds at all or?
I think part of the reason that why we're here and why the mill rate is growing is because the town hasn't been necessarily looking at utilizing funds. And I'm not suggesting that we utilize those kinds of funds year over year. I'm suggesting that because of the lack of funding that has happened for the Talon School System over the eleven years, it's dug a hole. The district is extremely a valuable asset to the town. I'm saying that they need to look into their funds, which are in overages to help us get out of this hole. And kind of like that five-year plan, yeah, it's going to take something to get us out of here. But the hope then would be if we had people that would do so, we could have reasonable, sustainable, two to three percent standard inflation kind of budget increases year over year. But that's not the place we're in. So that's why I think we need to ask them to help get us out of this place that everyone has kind of gotten us in together.
But do we do that as a budget increase or is that just injection from those other funds?
You're asking what the process is, like to ask the, because that's a really good question, right? Do we just, every time towns will give us more money, right?
Right.
So there's an opportunity for, and do you want to carry? Sorry. Because I, I thought that was your question, so I'm making sure. So there is, there is a process. We do have a joint meeting. And that can be brought up at a joint meeting. That could also be something that Chair and Vice Chair have with Chair and Vice Chair of each board to talk about different things. Dr. Willard created, has created multiple one-papers for our joint meetings on ten different things. So there is an opportunity to open up that door, that communication window to have that conversation and ask about those respective ones.
Okay, just one, I think did show you on that, you know, I, I think you're spot on. In fact, and that's why, you know, we asked Dr. Willard to just on a high-level brief, the five-year plan, because I think the conversation that you're talking about right there had to happen. You know, it goes back again to this budget being more of just a, a two-month conversation. It's a whole year conversation. To Dana's point, Jen and I have, have sat down with Katie and Jacob from the Town Council and said, hey, we'd like to start these conversations. We'd like to talk to the town about doing things differently. Not necessarily focused on this budget, but because we firmly believe in it, I think we as a board have to commit to the fact that a five-year plan has to be developed and worked with the town, not just the council, but the entire town to put us in a position where we're not asking for these numbers in the future. Dr. Willard, I know you made the point last time, Reeve said, you know, if we weren't paying some of these things, we are paying, that, that the town might take over for us or could take over for us. Our asks would be in the two percent, sometimes even the three percent temperature. We have to make that process, not just an ask. And so, well, I don't believe it helps us. Now, I do believe it's critical that it helps us in the next few years. It's something we can't ignore.
There are some cooperative things you could do that would make the board side without, you know, less of an ask. The other thing is just, I, I'm sure I don't like to say this, that four percent also, if you recall the prior conversations we were having, one of the offsets was the ARCA two hundred thousand that we have reserve funds in our insurance account, et cetera. That four percent includes an offset of, of not putting that, because we have reserves that have gone up, not putting the two hundred thousand from the ARCA money we got into the account because the, I mean, if you recall from our last conversation, we have a higher in reserves than we had. So that four percent would also include not putting that money back in there. I didn't, I, I just recalled that now. I'm not sure that was clear with that, so just wanted to.
Yeah, I, I don't know the next one. I didn't.
Can I clarify what the three of you just said, so I am. Or if you, so you're saying the last statement you had made, Tony, was that we cannot, besides that special meeting that's coming up, we cannot ask for any of those funds for this budget cycle or, or am I incorrect?
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. We can't.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's too close to call whether or not we would get it.
Oh, I understand that completely, yes.
We can absolutely ask. In fact, to Dr. Willard's point, you know, should one of these scenarios become what we pushed up to the, to the town, we could absolutely put on there, but that assumes.
Oh, well, yeah.
Right.
All right. Yes, I'm sorry, Dan, were you, are you finished?
No.
Just to follow Bill's talking about, about open choice. Dr. Will, if we're, if we take all these things away from our district, are we necessarily that competitive for people to want to pay to come to our district? I mean, just looking at some of the things we're taking away in our surrounding towns likely aren't. I don't know that it would be my choice.
I think that your five-year conversations are extremely important to maintain your competitiveness. And I think that, you know, you have a great school system, impacts of any kind of reductions obviously impact programs. And so, you know, that, that will, that can play out not great, something like that. But, but you have a real opportunity to work in collaboration with the town on ways that we don't have to do the Groundhog Day thing here. Because you have a point, one point seven one over eleven years, and you have data to suggest that that's not what's going on everywhere. So there are solutions under the leadership of, that you have here, who finds new solutions and not have to do Groundhog Day every year. So to your credit, you're looking to do that. I think that will help maintain your competitiveness. If you're, you know, in due diligence, that will help.
So again, my point before on seeking, seemingly responsible decisions now may actually cost us more in the long run.
Right, yes.
And then to, to your point twenty, I disagree. I'm sorry. I, I believe absolutely the conversation starts now with the Town Council, and that is absolutely my intention. It's budget season, that's what we're supposed to do. And why are we going to kick it to next year to, to start digging out of the hole? We have a meeting on Monday. Okay.
I said that we certainly could. I don't believe, I, I think the chances of getting them to agree this year, I think we've got to keep it going. But we have not only opportunity, we're talking about Monday, we've got the twenty-second meeting. We've got a commitment from Town Council leadership to continue having discussions going forward. We've got the opportunity to add asterisks to the presentation that Dr. Willard provides for. We have opportunities. I just don't believe the council's going to rotate quick enough to be able to offer us reasonable solutions this year. I think it's a long.
I just don't want to discourage the people in this room rather than empower the people in this room to start that joint collaboration with our town now.
Okay, and if I, if I came across that, well, that's what my, I, I do believe we can talk. I just don't believe it's a short-term conversation.
Also, there's Town Council members online watching, so that's part of how they're mapping.
Hello. Yeah. No, I'm all set. It's just, I'm a little confused that how we can, if, if the need is three million dollars from a seven percent budget, that's, I guess, with the need with these personnel reductions, I just don't see updoing a seven percent increase right now. And then starting next year at forty-four million and then three million after that. In ten years, that's going to be a sixty-two million dollar budget. If you're three percent, can you see what you get? But if we're able to somehow, like we're at four percent next year, this coming year, that's one point seven, can we get one point three million from this nineteen million dollars that we have available in the fund? To inject funds and then not start this massive trend of six, five, four, 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 three, two, three percent, whatever it is. But it just seems like if it hasn't been funded well over the last couple of years, why aren't we just injecting funds from this nineteen million dollar reserve? If we can have a discussion, that's great. Why would we not do seven now, though? Or if we did seven now, that's just setting us up for a really big bill. If, that's setting up quite the precedent. If you like do six percent over the next ten years, that's eighty, seventy million dollars for our budget. If you did nine percent for our level services, that's hundred and twenty million dollars of what we turn into. So if we can just inject funds now, but I don't know how that actually works. But that's starting off with a three, four percent increase to the actual budget and then getting other funds from other areas. Because it's just like giving somebody a massive raise instead of a bonus.
Well, it's bringing somebody who's been underpaid for eleven years up to where they should be and then giving them a reasonable bonus.
No, but I, I'm all set, though. That's kind of where my head's at, but it seems like other discussions have to be had for that.
Right, you're right. Jen, can you, can you send us the board or at least myself prior to this meeting? Can you send me that data regarding that statute of what percentage they're supposed to be in the fund and all that stuff?
You can find that right on the town website.
Dr. Irving.
Oh, I'm sure.
You are.
All right, it's, all right.
But thanks, if you have it, you did post it on the, the board there.
Yeah, I have it somewhere. Yeah, I mean, it's, it is the, they have a minimum.
There could be some way I can find the number.
Oh, no, no, I, I thought you had it. You're reading from something. I thought.
No, he don't. Yeah, but that's actually from.
All right. Yes, it is in there. Just go, we have a search. Okay. All right. So I have to, I have a few things. Some of us just didn't answer by the time we've gotten this far. But I do want to state, I'm in a hundred percent agreement that we can't be losing all of these staff positions, teacher positions. The music program has to stay. There's too many people involved and it's a great benefit to the children. Computer education, the middle school, I think is a need. I mean, we use computers from, like kids four years old, we use computers, like, you know, come on. The health insurance, everybody talked about. I think that two hundred K, no matter what plan we go with, should be removed if we already have a surplus that we talked about. A good reserve that's not needed whatsoever. So that's two hundred K, no matter what line or altering or maneuvering we do. So the open choice program. So we said that we can't do anything regards to that for the September. I mean, I know we're talking about a five-year plan. It's something that we can get something going and say two years or three years or four, five years seems like a mile away. And then things happen, things happen, and things happen. I don't know exactly what the process is, but at least like the get that maybe on the agenda at least, even after the budget for, you know, seeing about a shorter timeframe for that. Because trying to generate revenue five years down the road just seems pretty far off.
And just to be clear, the five-year plan doesn't necessarily mean we'll plan and then not implement anything for five years. It just means that what we've asked and put together is over the next few years, what actions and activities and discussions do we need to have from now through then? Yeah, so if two years from now we're ready, then.
All right.
But we start planning, we start implementing, we start talking.
Okay. And then the last, one of the last things that I have is regards to the Birch Grove reading program. I put it in the portal, I'm sure, you know, it's being looked over. But I just want to make the statement. So there was thirty-one requests of positions that administrators throughout all the schools had requested in addition to all these other cuts, which is crazy. But the reading help of Birch Grove was mentioned on several of these and just four of these, four line items. One is the reading interventionist, a library para educator, two people for reading and math support. Then an absolute reading teacher. These are just at Birch Grove, and these are our youngest children that we need to be ensuring that they're thriving and getting up to par as they go through the school system. I think just not filling any of these positions or half of them or all of them, that's two, three, four, five people just in reading alone, I think is a big, big, big problem. And that's not whatever other cuts are being made, you know, within the school to adjust people that are there, who won't be able to help with reading as well, so. And I think part of, the other thing I have a problem with is we didn't really get the budget till, or this presentation, to really even go over any of these numbers until whatever hour before this. So I'm sure there'll be ten other questions I'll have, so. Very disappointing. We came to have a meeting to talk about these numbers, but can't even really talk about too much in-depth because we just received them, so.
And just on that, you know, the intention, or at least mine, didn't articulate, was to be able to go through those in here, so I was not, I wasn't expecting.
Yeah, I'm not a person that just looks at it and then can come up with ten questions, like it'll take me there two or three to look something over. I'll think about it. I'll be having a cup of coffee. I'll be having my kid with the park and, oh, we'll be asked about this or we'll get into this. So it's just not the way that I operate.
That is right. But I just want to make sure I share the responsibility and when it showed up because of how I intended to.
Yeah, okay. Oh, that, that's it for right now.
And so I would just like to second that, Lee, getting the information very hard to assume that anybody on the board could be making a forty-two million dollar decision without a little bit more than, no, we're, well, at the time you drive here, maybe forty minutes to, to think this over. So I completely agree with that. I do not think that the budget is horrific. I just want to say that. I think any use of the fund balance is a temporary fix. And maybe it's a temporary fix that we can then, you know, waltz into something, but at the end of the day, it's pretty much like the ERF that no one wants to ever spend because, well, we may need that someday. The town is on their, you know, bond rating based on our fund balance. So there is something about that balance that needs to be maintained. So that's just a completely different, and it's not under our decision-making process. You know, I've, I've said multiple times, we, we do have less students over the last ten years, six hundred less students. So there is an understanding that things would be different and we may have to make adjustments because we have a smaller enrollment. Even if we don't want to, there's just not enough people to sustain some of the things that we would like to have for a fully comprehensive program. Regarding the grade six, while I do see those only four less, if we kept the two teachers, we would be down to class sizes of eighteen point two five, which is less than grade one. So I, I feel like in sixth grade, even though it is a transitional year, they can probably handle a higher class size than eighteen point two five. Assuming that, you know, all of those students come and, and with it, we don't have more. So that's always a possibility. In terms of a five-year program, I, I think that that's a good idea. But again, there's a lot of variables that go on over five years. You know, there's, you know, different things that come up and obviously enrollment is one of those big things. I do question, and I think I said this last time. Um, I do question, and I think I said this last time, um, we're, we're not talking at all about reducing any administrative positions if we go to the four percent. It's all teachers, it's all that type of thing, which we have a, a good amount of administrative support. So it, it's just something that we could potentially look at as opposed to some of those teaching positions that are being, uh, proposed. Um, there's been some question about the bus contract increase. We don't have to get into the weeds of that, but I think there's been some questions about whether that's specifically accurate or not. So with all that said, um, you know, I was surprised by the four, uh, scenarios. I thought there was going to be like the six point nine eight. I, I thought there was maybe going to be the four. I thought there was going to be something in between those two, and then one that was maybe higher. But so now we have two that are higher. So I kind of feel like I, I'm leaning towards the four percent with maybe some add-ons. That's where I'm sort of at. Certainly want to keep music teacher. I've been very confused about this whole French teacher thing. Feel like that's been a little, maybe not purposely misleading, but, you know, it's gotten people very riled up and maybe rightly so. But if we're really not going to get rid of, or would likely not remove French from the high school, it, it's upsetting, I would think, to the students, to the parents, to us as a board, to have people upset that that's what we're going to do, when maybe that's really not what, what happened. But I understand what Dr. Willett said, that there don't guarantees about that. Um, so I, I, I think that's, that's kind of it for me. I just, you know, wanted to point out a couple of what I believe to be facts and, um, well, pass it.
Two.
I have one.
Right here. Snacks. I, I thought you had spoken.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my first question is, Rini, you mentioned last meeting about enrollment too. And you said that the reason why we can, I'm not going to exactly quote you, but it's something like, because we're not, we're not filling, we don't have the students to fill classrooms. And you just said we're six hundred less students over eleven years. Of course, that's not counting that we have cut positions over those eleven years too. So my question is, is that you keep making the statement that we don't have enough students to fill classrooms yet. We're getting emails from parents saying that they have students in high classrooms. We've seen, we see max, we got a report from Dr. Willett that shows max class sizes up to twenty-eight. I'm sitting here telling you that my child is in classes of twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and that it's detrimental. So I just don't understand why we keep having the same conversation about class size and that we don't have enough students to fill classrooms when we have a lot of data that our class sizes are too high.
That's what I'm going off of. Dr. Willett projected that show us, that's what I'm working off of.
With that, that showed the max class sizes. And there were items on there of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. There was a budget question that showed max class sizes. I asked specifically what those max class sizes were in the high school and the middle school, and they were class sizes up to twenty-eight. So I just don't understand how we keep discussing enrollment in this manner when we're hearing from parents and staff. Staff was in, staff has made several comments over the years that the class sizes are too high. So I just think, you know, the data is important there. And then, you know, to your discussion about reducing administrative positions and to what Tony said about, I, I don't think that we have to have an argument about this. I stated my position, you stated your position. I think that that's it. I'm not here to answer your questions. I am going off of what my interpretation of the budget and the information that we have presented is. I don't want to feel like I have to defend myself, just like I'm not saying you have to defend yourself about what you said. That's all.
So.
Thank you, Rini, but you've in fact interrupted me with what I didn't do to you. I am merely countering the points that you made because there's a lot of public listening, and I want to make sure that the data that they're hearing is accurate. So if my data isn't accurate, then let me know.
Let me, let me, let's turn that question to Dr. Willett. When you came up with, when your office came up with the reduction of, that or for any of those, uh, there was a reason you looked here rather than looking at admins or, you know, I know you were talking about class size survey when it comes to high school and elementary and taking stuff from there. But can you, can you talk a little bit about why we went with this group versus maybe some of the other groups there?
Yeah, you know, and you can ask me any questions in any direction. And I'm not, I'm not sure I understand completely what Ms. Beeson was saying about some of the things she said, whether it be having bi clarifications. Well, the transportation price is clearly higher.
But it's worth the, the reductions.
In any case, this is, um, so yes, you know, these, in a situation where you have to make, you know, these kind of choices, um, I think we all know that, you know, it's some, it's not something we want to do. Um, but to speak to, for instance, administration-wise, there aren't any. You know, I'm understaffed now. There are more administrators in comparable districts around us. There is a question answered. You have sixty-five questions. One of them is pertaining to that. Town like Coventry has fewer, I'm not sure there's more. I don't have a director, curriculum, pretend, you know, we, we don't have, we're not overstaffed on the admin side. Um, the admin are responsible for grants, state reports, um, ma- massive number of evaluations on their own. If you take those individuals out, I can't do it. I'm a superintendent doing twenty-four when other superintendents do six. Um, you know, other, other things they're doing, you know, one is the S backs have jumped up by seventeen and twenty-five points. That's all the math supervisor and work teachers with that person. Um, everything that we had to do with literacy and the right to read grant and everything going on there, we would drop many balls. It's unsolved, right? Do I need to?
Point of order, Mr. Karen, and I'm not doing this to be rude, but it is important that people get a chance to speak, and whether it's Ms. Beeson, Jen, or Dr. Willett, it doesn't matter who it is. People need to get a chance to finish their sentence.
So the, um, supervisor, uh, right to read and all the work that we've had to do, um, you know, we, we got a seventy-eight thousand dollar grant. There's no way I could have gotten that without Ms. Daily Burns's assistance. Uh, I can't do it all. And if these people aren't here, we're not getting it. We're not getting the seven year, we're not going to get the grants, we're not going to be able to do, you know, the duties that we have to do obligation-wise from a contractual point of view for even evaluations. There's no way I can, we can hit the timeline. There's not enough admin to evaluate. Um, you know, the N G S S, Perkins Grant, um, that can be all managed by science, uh, I can't do those. So what will happen is the ball will get dropped. We'll drop the ball with state reports, we'll drop the ball with the N G S S. We won't hit timelines for evaluations. The union, the teachers' union have big problems with that. That could compromise our ability to hope for more great teachers and handle ones that may need to find another path. Uh, this is, um, very important from the operational point of view of our district that we have the admin we have, and it's not an unreasonable number of that.
Um, so the point I was making about, which I guess can be larger now, about the administrators and also tying back to, um, you know, the suggestion. And, you know, Tony, you talked about how, and I won't, again, I won't direct quote you, so feel free to correct me. But, um, you know, that we'll leave it to the staff to figure out where, if we, we need to cut something, we'll leave it to the staff, to Dr. Willett and his team to figure out where those, where those things are best. But yeah, then we're going to talk about protecting ban. I don't think we can be specific about what we want to keep and also not take responsibility for what we're also going to lose. And so with the administrators, I think it's important if we're going, because I think it was also mentioned last meeting, why don't, why do we have three curriculum supervisors? Can they, can't they do multiple? Well, Jen Webster's a mathematician. Mark Rudy is a scientist. Barbara Daly Burns has worked in literacy for thirty-five years and in this district for sixteen years, so. Who are we going to lose that then is going to cover something else? So we'll, we'll take our mathematician away, but we'll ask our literacy expert to cover math. It just doesn't make sense. And so because it was discussed last meeting, I don't know if anybody else did, but if we're going to talk about cutting positions, which I thought it was going to, I went back and I looked at the positions, so I looked at the roles and responsibilities that were posted. But they've also all given presentations over the last two years. So I spent an hour going through all of our agendas and finding when each one of them did a presentation, then finding that video on YouTube and listening to each one of their presentations and the things that they do for our district, K through twelve, every day. Who, so if you need to know where those are, I can give you the exact timestamps of where to go look at those presentations. Because if we're going to talk and suggest that people are cut, we should know what they do. And like Dr. Willett said, Barbara Daly Burns, again, she's been in literacy for thirty-five years. She has been in this district for sixteen years. She brought our district, um, to level with state requirements of dyslexia before we were even required to do so. And there are several other things, the N G S S that he mentioned and the acronym, acronym. Mark, Mark Rudy discusses in his presentation, that is the Next Generation. Next Generation Science Standards. Again, these, the, all of the data about our test scores, our special education, how co-teaching has impacted directly our test scores, which I've heard people in this room ask about our test scores, are all being worked and monitored and handled by these curriculum supervisors. That, that work cannot be put on teachers, teachers responsible for their classroom. That work cannot be put on administrators. Our commit, our, we, our administrators don't span K through twelve. It would all have to go on to Dr. Willett. And I don't think that, I don't think that would be effective and that would work. So I just think that when we, if we're going to bring up other things to be cut, listen, teachers are, staff is my people. They're the front lines all day long. But it doesn't mean that we're in a position where we should be losing these other people that are holding our district together at this point either.
Thank you.
And you do, you have made, again, I've, I've said this, and I think I've been pretty frank about any budgets that I've offered too, not saying, um, you have made an adjustment for enrollment. This constant cycling back like you haven't is, is something that ignores the information that you have. Yeah, you know, there's forty-nine different, uh, forty-nine, uh, F T E lessons teachers than there was in those six. And, you know, you do have, if you're going to have to make adjustments here, there are places that, you know, would be more damaging than others with respect to class size. And that's what I have found and put forward for your consideration. So, um, you know, I think it's just, you're in a tough spot and you, and there's some tough work to do, but that tough work is, has never been, you know, the tough work is in, uh, getting that five-year plan, or that's tough work. And that's a, that's a really good thing to be looking forward, you know, and do.
And then just, I mean, and I understand what you said, Jen, and I do think there is a drastic difference between setting the direction and dictating how that is achieved. Uh, when, when we're saying, hey, you know, we're looking at this level of the budget and these are the programs that we, the district, you know, we need to keep. Uh, I do believe that's different than saying, get rid of this position or that position. Uh, I think that goes into the weeds that then pay Dr. Willett, uh, to take care of this, Dan.
Finish your comment.
Um, so thank you. Um, a couple of things, I think we're talking a lot about budget numbers, dollars, percentages, and I know that that's, we're in a budget conversation, so. Um, but I think what we really need to regroup and talk about is what do we need to educate the students to talk? Now, I don't want to make this sound frivolous when I say we're going to be talking about, we should be talking about, right? We should be talking about what are the needs for our students who are trying to talk. Figure out what those needs are and then provide that budget. Now, I'm not the resident expert. He's our resident expert. And, you know, uh, Mr. Paul and our administrators, all those folks, they're experts, right? However, by saying, here's your number, figure out what we need, what should be cut or what should be implemented, what should be, whatever, it's not a fair position to be put in when it comes to that, because if you can't find that or it's not available, like, we need to start with what do we need to provide a solid education in town? Um, I think that's where we're at. And I know this is budget, so we have to talk percent. So like, I, you know, we have some budget people in this room, myself, Dan, he, that's, that's our life, you know, and that's what I do. But I get it, like, we, we need to start at the base level, right? Ground level. Where is the ground level to take care of the students of talent? So now to answer the question about the sixth grade class, not to be argumentative, not to be, this is the uh, evolving discussion. I am a parent of a fifth grader and a fourth grader. They're both in twenty-four, twenty-five kids in their class, respectively. One is, one is in the bubble that's going to be four less than our current sixth grade class. So she's in a twenty-four student class. The other one is in the next bubble up. Uh, sorry, I need to read in glasses. At a hundred and sixteen. So that's, so my math from one forty-six to one sixty-eight is not eighteen point five kids in the classroom. So, and as Jen pointed out, um, I think Dr. Willett, you said mid twenties or what have you, when you restructured the but either, either then, if you bubble up to additional, let's just round it to, if you want to say fifteen, we want to say twenty for round numbers, it's fifteen or twenty kids you're adding to the sixth grade class, but the fourth grader from the So that just increases the So, and even though we have the table that says we're twenty-two hundred projected, twenty-one eighty-nine, and we have less students, I mean, we've talked about all the reductions in staff and how many staff members and how many teachers and how many educators and how many programs and how many co-teaching and how many paraprofessionals. Those are people that are outside of the classroom, outside of the program, that are no longer available to educate students. Or it makes this classroom smaller, students makes the class sizes larger, because there's less educators to teach that class. That's fact. Um, I get concerned when we talk about misleading or misguided people and in what have you. If we talk about the, the facts, the facts are there's a hundred and sixty-eight fourth grade kids. There's a hundred and fifty-sixth grade kids down. That's an increase. The facts are a hundred and eighty-three first grade kids compared to a hundred and fifty-sixth grade kids. That's an increase.
That is.
And maybe it didn't decrease this year of four students, and I'm just talking about the sixth grade class. I mean, I, I, that's just, that's simple mathematics. It's going to be, those classes are going to be larger classes. Great. Um, you want to talk about the bus contract, we can talk about the bus contract. That's not today, but we're in a bad situation because of bad decisions that people made and voted on. And we're hundreds of thousands of dollars in pool because we went out to it, when we shouldn't have. And I personally voted against that, and I will say that out loud. We should have extended it, should have, could have, would have. We're here because of decisions people make. That's an additional reason why we're here for decisions that people have made for the last eleven years. My last point will be to, I think it was Bill and for Dan, I apologize for her last question. What they asked was, um, the actual proposed budget, someone's asked, proposed budget versus federal budget, sorry. Um, question, there was a question on the budget. There hasn't been one time that in the last eleven years that his proposed budget was approved. It was always cut. It was always reduced. And I want to say it was at fifty percent on the average, like one point, it was like three percent versus one point six five, and excuse me for not having that right in front of me. Um, but you've always said that you provided, what you try to be a fiscal responsible budget by ensuring that we're providing needs to our students that we needed. But every year in the last eleven years, your resident expert expertise with all of your educators and all your administrators and the principals and the assistant principals and your I T folks and your facilities folks have provided you with needs, our resident experts have provided you with needs for the school district. And you've proposed that to the board event. And since the last eleven years on your, on your table, it has not been approved. That's fact. Your proposed budget.
Well, I, you know, I, I came in December twenty.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, loving is, my apologies.
No, no.
So whether it be Dr. Willett's or the superintendent's proposed budget.
It's one of the superintendents.
Sorry, I should be, I'm in phase. Um, it hasn't been approved. So we're talking about, you know, resident experts to figure out what to do. He's, he, when his predecessor had told us for the last eleven years what we needed. And for the last eleven years, we have not complied with that. For multiple reasons, I'm not saying whatever, but again, as Jen said, we're here. Let's have that fruitful discussion. Let's have this conversation with the town council. Let's figure out how to do some funding. Yes, as, as you know, we, we can't keep throwing bandages at things. We have an opportunity today to make a good, solid decision for the board event with our resident expert, Skyden. We have an opportunity today to make a good solid decision for the board of ed with our resident expert, Skyden, and work with our town council to be creative, so we don't keep making the same mistakes that we've made the last eleven years, because our kids are suffering for it. And as far as like the language and such, in any other class, we talked about K through six certification or high school certification, if we're eliminating something in an area, it might be that role, maybe that person's retiring from whatever it is, then there's multiple people that are certified on multiple levels that you have to move around to put it. So maybe it is the middle school, maybe it's the high school, he doesn't know that. But that's, that's the conversation, he's been pretty crystal clear that he doesn't know which teacher that is, whether it's high school or middle school. He doesn't know, we don't know that till the union situation happens and they look at who's in the tent. So that's, that's where I'm at. All right, and I appreciate a lot of the questions that came over here, because I think we have, we're having some really great conversations that I needed. Because I think we really, unfortunately, we're in a, in a bad situation and it's a tough spot for especially some, some of you guys who are brand new to the board, it's not a fun position to run, to walk into. Um, but here we are, and I hope that we can work together to figure something out.
Jen?
Uh, a few thoughts, I'll be brief. Um, the conversation started, uh, sort of debate, I guess, started with mentioning that we should start at about four percent, and this is not me being a jerk, I'm genuinely curious as to why, speaking of, why we, and this is a conversation, why we start at four percent versus nine percent, then I'll continue on with the rest of, if that's okay, if I can ask you, just Jayden, the total. Um, why start at four versus nine, that, that's my.
Yeah, and, and that's a great question, I appreciate the opportunity to, to respond to that. You know, when, when I look at, you know, many of the people up here have talked about responsibility to provide for the educational needs uh, of our community, of our children, of our staff, of our neighborhoods. And I look at these four scenarios as starting places, you know, like we talked about, having our one and then make the adjustments. I look at, on one side, a nine percent that provides for this level, and then on the other side of four percent, uh, which contains significant reductions and, and has some, some places that I find are, are hiccups. I know that much to the point, uh, I think so, but I think Dana made, you know, in previous years, uh, we've proposed budgets, we've had reductions, and opportunities have come up to, to bring, either bring those back or bring back similar, and so the, the effects aren't necessarily what we've seen here. Uh, and, I wish you, but talking with, with Dr. Willis, there are opportunities that, that he sees that aren't, they're not solid enough to stay as a budget item, but there are opportunities there, there's a little bit of effort, I think you could see. Uh, for that, my choice over what I need is starting at what I thought was the more reasonable fiscal number, and then trying to build that back up to the need, rather than starting at the top and trying to reduce it and cut heads, is that what you said?
Sure, sure, no, that, that's fair. I think we just have a difference in philosophy, and, and what I mean by that is, when I got elected to sit in this seat by the nineteen hundred people that sent me here, it was to advocate for their children, to advocate for the people in those buildings. And I feel by starting at the number four versus the number nine, well, what does that include? We just got the list as to what that includes, and I'm gonna use the same word Jenny was before, it is horrific. Uh, it, it's horrific, it's horrifying, it's terrible, it's awful, I'm gonna, I'll just be upfront. And so I get a little concerned, and I, I, it's, it's almost, that's our main job, to advocate for our public school system. And I feel we're being hypocritical by starting at that lower number, saying, you know what, we're signing up to do a job, and that job is to advocate for your kids, your kids, your kids, your kids, everybody's children, every, all those staff members in those buildings, and then say, well, let's start down here, ignoring everything that exists within those buildings, uh, or, or the walls themselves. And so it's a difference in philosophy, and that's, and I wanna make sure it, it comes across that way and not, you know, I'm not being a jerk, just a question, and, and I just wanted to start there to get that across. Um, again, our number one job is to advocate and maintain our school system, not to do, and I've said this, and I get nervous saying this, but not to do the town council's job for them. And I'm not saying this because I wanna be for the numbers, the, the numbers are important. I'm not as good as the numbers, as probably Rini is, or as probably you are and what, whatnot, but darn it, i- it is, it is a crucial part of our job to advocate, to support, to build, to maintain, and to sustain, and do more. Um, I worked with those schoolchildren, and there was a comment, I can't remember when it was made, um, that the incoming sixth graders could deal with a lot. Um, and it sort of sent a shockwave like through my body, because they can deal with a lot, and I give those kids a lot of credit for dealing with a lot, especially out uh, in different districts where there's varying circumstances in their homes. It doesn't mean that because they're dealing with that, there's not gonna be long-term impacts on those children, whether it's negative or sometimes positive. Most times negative, and so I, I wanna make sure that we're understanding that just because we can, and this is a lesson you teach second graders, third graders, just because we can doesn't mean we shouldn't. And so that all ties back into everything we've discussed here. And I, I go as far to say it's irresponsible to hope with praise and to do with support, um, by the data that we've been provided. And so I just wanted to make that point. My third point. Um, and I think it's a, a, a fair question Dan asked in terms of, you know, how it's structured from year to year, how we got back, how we get back to that point. Um, the, the best way I can put it in Jayden's perspective is the lower we make it now, and the, the more it'll be the next year and the next year and the next year, and I wanna elaborate on that a little bit. The last ten years, we've gone with, and I, I say we, I was only a part of the last two years, and I'm, I take accountability in this absolutely, because at the end of the day, I voted for the last two budgets. Um, the last ten years, every year we've chosen to make it lower now, and so that's why, to Jen's point, we're seeing this, all of a sudden, we're here. This is where we are, and I feel in my heart and in my soul, there is no other alternative than to give the school system the boost that it needs. I'll say this, there's a position in here that's up for cut, that's the six point nine eight uh, budget proposal. There's a position in there that's up to be cut. My sibling, and I won't get into it too much, my sibling just took a test with that person yesterday morning because they can't attend regular school because of such a social anxiety. My, my sibling's not alone, there are hundreds of students who go through the same thing on different levels, on different levels. But that position's being cut next year. And so, again, kids can deal with a lot, but there's long-term impacts going to each and every one of these kids, and so I wanna make sure we're, yes, there's numbers. Yes, and, and, and got started over the last month, I've looked at every possible line to try to make myself a better board of education member. I have tried and I am going to continue, continue looking at those numbers. But we can't ignore what's, what's being spoken to us, over a hundred emails in the last, I don't know how many weeks. Uh, uh, we've had students come in and sit in here, we've got another crowd here tonight, we've got teachers who were louder than we were, and they didn't say a single word sitting in our front row. And so it's those types of things that I feel like we're ignoring a huge chunk of what our job is and what our responsibility is. And I can't sign myself up to be a part of that for another year. And so I just wanted to get Jayden's point across, uh, this is where I'm at. I'd rather start at the nine, what, what is it, nine, call me crazy, nine, nine, seven, eight? No reductions, then start at four. And so I just wanted, that would be my conclusion, uh, to my statement, thank you. And I appreciate you answering my question and having that conversation.
And, and, I wanted to make sure, you know, we are clear. You know, Jen and I, and Bill, the leadership team, have, have had many conversations, and I'm excited by the, the, the diversity of thought, the nine people that, that the town is choosing to put up here. Uh, I think we have some incredibly valuable opportunities going down the line to make some real change. So, you know, regardless of whether you're on the four percent or the nine percent, I say with no doubt in my heart that all nine people walked in this room with, eight, nine walked in the room originally, with a concern and a care for the students and the, the teachers and the staff of our, of our school. Nobody is looking at this attempting to, to do, you know, to the point, I mean, everybody's got a, a different perspective and looking at doing good from a slightly different perspective.
We didn't come off that.
It did not, it did not, that, that's my way of, my long way of saying I agree with, with what you were saying, and it's fine. And I respect your position, and thank you for saying it, for sure, so.
I just would, would just briefly mention staff, so I'll mention staff some more. Um. Uh, I think that, well, we're not talking about that a lot here, and there's a lot of impacts that our staff goes through every time we cut positions. Not only is it horrific to go through this process and cut positions, and I'm sure being in the schools as it's happening, um, but to not understand the impacts of the decisions that we're making, that it's going to make to their daily lives. Um, you know, for instance, you know, we talked about, yeah, you can, you can move teachers around for bubbles, um, and I've seen that happen plenty. And I think it's one thing when we're talking about, you know, moving a teacher around at Birch Grove, or moving a teacher around at TIS, or moving a teacher around middle school. I think it's another thing when we're talking about taking a teacher, a sixth grade teacher, because they have a K to sixer who's been teaching a specialty, you know, say, language arts for fifteen years, and bumping that teacher down to K, K or first. I think I said it last time, like, our staff is, are not factory workers, and we can't just make these decisions and decide we're gonna just pop them in places and, and, and hope it works out for them. But yeah, but yeah, still expect that they give our children their best every single day, and they see them more hours than we do during the week, especially those K to five teachers. So we really have to think about the impacts these things do, we have barely, barely mentioned um, mental health, social emotional health tonight. Large class sizes impacts that, taking away from programs, takes, um, uh, impacts that, you know, Tony, you said we can't get into the weeds, we're not just talking about cutting positions, we're talking about cutting programs. I mean, and that's not just band, that's the co-teaching program. And there were several others, that's taking world language out of the middle school. Okay, great, they don't need it for graduation to have it in the middle school. But I know, I mean, I know not everybody has kids in the school, but I'm amazed at the fluency that my two children speak Spanish and can speak it to each other, and it's because they've been taking it for so long. And I had four years of Latin in, in my high school, in Meriden, in a city where there were lots of language options, and I probably can say two words to you right now. Um. So, I mean, these, the, the program loss is significant, it's significant to students, it's significant to the staff. There's a lot of staff online tonight, and we're talking about some of their positions. And there's a lot of staff watching on TV at home, or are gonna watch the YouTube video. So we need, these are, these are the people that work for us. You know, some of us that work at big companies, you have human resources, you have, there are people who take care of, you know, making sure that you're properly treated. We need to, we definitely need to make sure that we're doing that and we're thinking about that and how this impacts them as well.
The other?
Well, I guess the only thing I would say is, is, once families start seeing that, and, and I can't remember who made the point earlier, that, that the school system is like one of the biggest draws to moving into town, we're not a very exciting town. It's not what you, but who does that fall on, ultimately, that, well, that's a whole separate discussion, but I think there's, there's, there's a crucial part to encouraging people to still reside in town. And I think the biggest factor is the school system, I absolutely think that, is that board of ed, not necessarily. But how much of the budget is, is, is the board of ed budget? I mean, that should answer it yourself, itself, and so um, there was a point that Jen made, and I'm now blanking, but I just wanted to get that, at least that across there, um, there was a point you made, Jen. And I, I'm just not remembering um, what I was going to add, so if I, if it comes to me, I'll, I'll tap Rini and, you know, hello, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, you okay? My question was, what would encourage, once, if you move into town and you see, well, the fifth grade teacher just moved down to first grade, the first grade teacher just had to move down to second grade, to second grade, and all these things continue to happen year by year by year, what tells you, even though you move into town in first grade, by fifth grade, why shouldn't I go look elsewhere? There's more reliable and more consistent experts who have been in that field for however many years, they've been in that field, and I can send my child there. And instead, I'm just gonna settle for what it is here, and so that, that, eventually, that's going to become a very large grand scale issue. It's a question of when, and it's already, it's already become an issue at home. And so I, 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 again, it's, while it might not be the large population, that population is increasing year by year, in considering their options, so that was the point I wanted to add on there, thank you.
Jen?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll just say, even if we vote here today to approve the superintendent's proposed budget at six point ninety percent, we're still losing ten positions.
And programs.
What's that?
And programs.
And programs. So, you know, we, we, we've gone back and we've said historically, he's never gotten what he's asked for with, with his budget. But even if we, if we go against history and give him what he asks for,
Still.
we're still losing a significant amount, and we would be setting, first time in the last, how many years have you been superintendent here, ten years?
Since twen, December of fourteen.
So, first time we give him what he wants and we're still, you know, losing ten teachers.
Jen?
But we, we do have a plan for, for higher.
I agree, yeah. You know, that, that is part of, you know, that, uh, approving the proposed budget is part of the five-year plan to hopefully put us in a better position uh, moving forward. Um. Some of you might know the answer to this, so it's not necessarily just to Dr. Willis, but what's the likelihood of getting a million and a half from town council?
Yeah, I don't know. You know, just like every board is different, every council is different. You know, our conversations with, with, with Katie and with Jacob have suggested a council that is willing to handle with us. Uh, they suggest the council that, you know, does understand the importance of the school, uh, just as it's a council that realizes it's an entire town. So that, that's a long way of saying, I don't know, I, I certainly think that they will work, but I don't know what he said.
Right. So I just wanted to go back, it was really bugging my mind still, this proposed thirty-one with the reading. Can you go into what, what is the solution if you denied in your budget all of these reading positions for the Birch Grove children? And I don't know what's there now currently, or any of those people gonna be moved around, so they're not gonna help with the reading, or we have other people helping with the reading to offset these thirty-one or these six positions that I mentioned?
Yeah, you know, um, part of my job is to review what their requests are, to determine whether, you know, what we can afford and, and what our services are, you know, and uh, that would be about a hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand more if you were to add the ones you're proposing.
Okay.
I think it's about three teachers and a, and a parent.
Yeah, some, some support or whatever, what about taking two hundred grand from the health insurance and we pay for those people, we have these teachers to help for their reading, for their youngest children in town?
Right, well, so um, you know, the, the, the health insurance, you know, that we, the program that we, um, self-insured program we have, we have to make sure we have enough to cover any, you know, any changes to trend. So while we have an opportunity maybe, you know, in a year to take a certain amount, um, we can't rely on it to sustain staff because you're gonna have to pay for those staff every year after the year you hire. It's not gonna be that one year, you'd be adding staff in perpetuity, right? So, you know, receivably into the future, because you wouldn't hire them and then terminate them, and you're not gonna have that offset every single year, you can't rely on it every single year. We can rely on it maybe for, you know, to relieve the pain in a year and make some adjustments. Um, transportation, for instance, we're getting hit with the highest of the percentages now, but in the subsequent years of the contract, they lowered to five percent, right? So there'll be some adjustments down and we'll have more flexibility, and you see some of that in the five-year extension there, or, um, now. But we, you know, um, we are, the teachers right now are doing an amazing job of, of working with the kids. You know, we could always use, you know, more staff to help with reading, but right now, you know, you know, they're doing an amazing job with what they have. And uh, I didn't feel like we were in a position to be able to add staff this year based on what we're talking about. So that's why we didn't have staff this year, it did not seem like that was where we were.
But I guess, you know, we always say here, oh, we rely on the experts. So the experts at Birch Grove are recommending six people positions to help with reading, out of thirty-one, out of thirty-one, six. That, that is almost twenty percent of the positions, so asking for help for reading. I don't, still, sitting here now, I don't understand how that's, some, half of those are not in those budgets. So I, I'd still, bothers my mind, two hundred thousand would cover all of those positions, and then we say we're reducing the bu, the bus budget for next year. And doing other things that create revenue or generate revenue, hopefully. I, I just, I don't know, I just still sit here in awe that that can't be solution fit. Even if it's not six, if it's four, I think that something has to be done to bring some for the smallest children.
So, so let me, let me ask that, you know, that kind of segues into where I was hoping we'd get tonight. You know, our, my plan tonight at the end was that we would have one of these scenarios as a framework that we'd be able to direct the superintendent to where take this, make adjustments, talk to these people, come back next week when we have to approve with what'll be the, the final solution of it. And I'm hearing a lot of people talk about the individual scenarios and how they could be better. Or where they would start. Is anybody ready to make a motion for one of those that we would then vote on to pass on as direction to the superintendent?
Well, so, well, how can I apologize? Go ahead. It's not mine.
I'm, I'm asking the board.
Go on, this discussion.
Maybe unless you have a.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm raising my hand, but I'm not making a motion. Because I'm absolutely not ready and I will. I do not think that that should happen at this point in this conversation, as much as I would absolutely love to get home to my children. Um, I think that would be detrimental to, to us as a board. Um, I do think obviously we need to take a step forward, you know, I, I did just want to point out that I love the, the passion that Brian is talking about these positions with, and I think what it, what it shows is like, this is very important to you, you're a parent, you know, you have children. These are important to you for certain reasons. I'm a parent. Several of these things are important, but you know, I would say I would counter you for the, for the reading. I don't wanna keep it off, let's be, let's be clear. And at the thirty-one positions, let's be very clear. But, you know, the co-teaching is, like I said, it's extremely obviously important to me, like this is important to you. It's also, I believe, a, a very physically irresponsible decision because it will lead to a lot more special education costs. I know it will. People are listening to me talk right now and know that it will, because they'll be doing the same things in their five oh fours and I M Ps that I will if our children need more support. Um, but I think so many of us can look at so many of those things, right? They're, they're, they're really important to our population. I don't know how we do it from here. But we're clearly not going to, to all vote on giving everybody the world, and it would be a darn shame if we did a party line vote on any of this. That is not the goal for you and I, for this board. Um, so where do we get to where we can find maybe a common ground in some of these? And talk about, you know, again, it can't just be the program I care about, or the program Brian cares about, the program Dana cares about. We, we need to be able to have a, most of these, I mean, my kids are going to high school, so most of these things aren't applying to my kids. But I care very much about keeping band, I care very much about the sixth grade situation, I care very much about co-teaching throughout the district, I care very much, I can keep going, uh, the T M S computer, computer education teacher. It, it's just, it's crazy. Um, but where can we, can we somehow figure out if there's some middle ground and maybe find out if there's some, enough people willing to roll the dice with a higher number and having some, some discussions with the town councils? Like it will stop there eventually and come back to us, and we will have to make the cuts that we have to make. But right now, we're choosing those cuts.
And, and that's the, you may notice that, that's what I'm trying to do. You know, I, I'm not telling anybody that you have to pick scenario B plus these things. What I am saying is that what I believe the next step here is to propose a solution, a direction, be it one of these, a modification of one of these, or option Q over here. It either gets seconded, or if it's not, we have discussion, we adjust, and whichever one ends up passing, then we can direct the superintendent, so we can have a product for next week. I'm not trying to say that this, we need to do it now because in twenty minutes, I want to get out of here, you know, I will sit here all night with you and talk about this. But what I do wanna do is I wanna move it from just talking about concepts to a solution and talking about a solution. So with that being said, I'll ask the question again. We'll entertain a motion for one of those, one of those papers.
Well, I, I, I think we need to come to a consensus before we even make any motions on what we have here and what people are leaning towards and what we wanna say. Minus, say, if there's two sixth grade teachers, if we just make a compromise, we go with one. Like include the music back, like include the science, the computer science, like I think we need to have the discussion, are we X and L? A hundred percent no, uh, language at the middle school, like this is like, I don't know, we need to go around one item at a time, vote, vote for, to the C, because otherwise, we're just all gonna sit here till next Tuesday. And we're just gonna hope that we're gonna come up with, because obviously, nobody's just picking one of these items, right? We all want a little this, a little that, a little, you know. Uh, I'm just kinda talking, I don't know, I'm trying to find, because I don't think just you saying we're gonna pick one is, is the solution.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with you. Okay, what I'm saying though, is if, if, let's choose a direction. It doesn't necessarily have to be one of these, if you wanna talk about keeping these bullets. Let's do it, let's talk about it. But let's, let's, let's direct it.
We can't, can I say vote? If you do that with a vote, the risk is, is that there's a majority here, five of you vote at four percent, and then there's no longer a conversation to be had, and that would be catastrophic, in my opinion. It would be very politically divisive as well. So that's the risk with running right to a vote right now. We, we, that's, you, if you were in the minority, you wouldn't wanna do that either. So, and again, it's not our, it's not our intention. So I think we've got to find something somewhere, and this is an example, I'm not saying that we should go, but it sounds like, for instance, for instance, it sounds like most people here, they don't want to, they're really, we're really trying not to reduce people and personnel. Why don't we start somewhere where that is? But then talk about maybe some of the programs that we don't wanna reduce too. Like maybe that's somewhere between this eight point seven nine and the six point ninety that reduce, because the eight point seven nine doesn't reduce any staff. But we, we've talked about how it's not necessarily a person. So maybe there's, maybe there's a middle ground there, but then also, like there's some of these program reductions, again, I'm going to keep talking about co-teaching until my head explodes. Um, and, and maybe there are others as well that we could talk about adding in, seeing what that number is. And then going from there. That's just one suggestion. It's just an example.
My suggestion is for us to absorb the content and have further discussion for next. I, I think that, um, I mean, a couple of you made the point, and don't, we did just get it this evening, and it's, uh, and I know that we have a, our superintendent is doing the job of, I'll say annoying people about the overdramatic. He's doing the job of multiple people, so having this, and yes, it was late, later in the day to absorb it, but we have, um, we have one of our financial experts who's been very quiet in the room, Dan, you know what I mean, and I'd like to hear more from his perspective, right? Uh, you know, we have a lot of new members absorbing the content. I think, Tony, you and I have been together for a while. You and I have been doing this for a bit, and it, it's still a lot to absorb. Um, I'm not ready to commit any which way. I mean, I, again, hindsight's twenty twenty, I wish we could just say that, let's just give, give us a run, take care of our kids, you know, so, um, I wanna absorb the content, that's, sorry, I'll be not long when you do.
Our challenge with what you're saying, I completely agree. Uh, our challenge becomes the timeline. If we don't give some sort of direction tonight, then there is no time for Dr. Willet and his staff to create the document that can be approved next week and turned in next Thursday.
So I'm trying to get creative. So is there a way that we can, I don't know how, so we got a special meeting, but in the interim, send some, send some questions and some of our ideas to the county, town council, town council to see how receptive they are with some of these funding opportunities. So then we can have a more fruitful, educated conversation where we are with money, with funding from the town. Because let's be honest, we haven't been a showroom for a really long time. There's funds in places that can help. Even though, and, and, and part of our five-year plan can be, let's talk about some of the capital stuff that we pay for that we can move to the town. You know, it's longer conversation, but I think maybe, and it's always crunch time with budget, but there is an opportunity that can we sneak in? I know, not that I want another meeting, but I, I, this, we need to do it, this is important, this is for, for schools and our, and our children. Um, can we do that? And have a special meeting and have a conversation with town council to throw it at them, just to spitball, or is it?
You hear what I'm saying, right?
We have to, I mean, we can schedule a special meeting, it's toy bar service, uh, that we have to put. There is a meeting already on the books with town council leadership for Monday.
Right, I'll do whatever you want. You know, the, this, um, I provided you just when you asked for it. You asked for it to be presented. You have a lot of extensive information here that took quite a bit of effort to compile, so you have a lot to work with. That I'll come to as many meetings as you want, or not. So I'm, I'm happy to do that, and you know, I'll also talk to you individually if you need it. Call me, ask questions, and, you know, there's the help.
I just wanna say, I think it would be better for us as a group to come together and come to our own consensus before we then incorporate the town council, because if we're not all on the same page, you know what I mean, like rather than try to set up a joint meeting, it's probably better for us as a group to meet again and to some, where, where you're trying to get us, right? With Dana's point in mind that, you know, there's a lot here. Um, I just don't know that it would be fruitful to go directly from here to the town council when we don't even have a group consensus.
Uh, we all, we all.
I think it makes our decision here a whole lot easier if we don't have cooperative town council meetings. Because my, my thought is, in looking at this, is you know, I don't wanna lose any staff. I've got, I think I've got the most kids in the school system here. Um, so, you know, I don't wanna, uh, lose any staff either, and I think at the eight point seven nine percent, don't lose your minds, just hear me out, at the eight point seven nine percent option where we have no staff cuts, I think if we roll the money in from staff that are retiring into some of the programs that you have proposed cuts, you know, we can, uh, we cannot lose physical bodies, I know that changes stuff a little bit. But then roll it back into funding some of the programs that are cut. But for me, that would be contingent on getting some money from town councils for, with some assistance. You know, so that would help me in my decision-making if we knew how cooperative they were gonna be. Could they give us two million? Sounds like they could find it with, with some of the reserves that they have. Um, whether they will or not, I don't know, but it sounds like, you know, they could to help us stop kicking the can down the road, as the sign says. Um, and, you know, that would, you know, I think be the best of both worlds of, of looking at the whole budget and in giving us what we need to kind of reset. But also not, not putting us in a bad position by them helping us out a little.
So let me throw, let me throw this idea out there and let's see what reactions are. Like we have, Jen and I have a meeting, as we talked about, with, uh, Katie and Jacob for Monday. We can take the town council's temperature, keeping in mind that we would not be asking them for their official opinion, we would not be asking all of them for their opinion. We would simply be asking their leadership or what the, what the environment felt like. Uh, we could then set up a meeting, a special meeting of this morning for Tuesday to discuss that, to discuss, um, what, what you've had time to internalize. Uh, keeping in mind that we then need to have a solution so that Dr. Willet can do the move-up he does by Wednesday for it to be approved. I don't see any other timeline where that all works, uh, but I think that one could. But.
Again, love it. Love everything Bill said, love everything Dana said. Um, I guess my only concern is I don't think Dr. Willet's gonna be able to run it that quickly, from Tuesday to Wednesday or Tuesday to Thursday. I kind of, I mean, you know, I don't wanna put everybody on the spot here, but whatever, we're all saying what we want to anyway. Um, you know, I talked about, you know, maybe doing the no personnel reduction and also, no, you know, working on some of those program reductions. Bill has now talked about the same thing. We, could we, could we see if we can get to, if all of us can agree to get to something to at least let Dr. Willet start working something? And then, by the way, we still talk about all of this, but we can talk about that too, and maybe we're a step closer so that if we do get a good feeling from the town council and all of us do, wouldn't it be great to have consensus, huh? And all of us do feel okay with what we had, then we, we'd be a step closer. I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to throw that out there just so that we're not in the same position on Tuesday.
And, and I'm understanding that, I'm with you, Jen. Uh, keep in mind that, you know, the, the motion and the vote makes it sound like it's a lot more official than it actually is. Our schools, our biops don't let us do what would have been a struggle. Instead, what we do is we take that motion, we take the vote, and how you worded says that, hey, we're giving our superintendent the direction to start working here, provided that these questions are answered, uh, and we'll come back at this point. Uh, I think that does exactly what you're asking to do.
Okay, well, it helped me a lot, a lot of emotions, we'll see where that goes. So I'd like to make a motion to direct our superintendent to start with the eight point seven nine proposal that includes no staff reductions but explores options to keep some of the programs that are being reduced. I can't repeat that.
Was that an official motion? I'm sorry.
I, I did. Is it ended?
If, if you're ending, you seconded it, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, no, that's, that's confused a little bit.
See, guys, it doesn't get easier after two years. You still don't know what you're doing.
Dr. Willet, did you get that?
Yes, uh, I understand you're too upset in most things unless you wanna clarify, this state is a motion to direct the superintendent to generate an eight point seven nine budget exploring putting programs back.
Opportunities.
Opportunities to put programs back.
Yes, um.
So when we're ready for discussion, we can talk about that. But I got it.
Do we have a second? Jane's Dr. Jane's. All right, discussion.
Really? Oh, sorry. I was just, I don't know, I wanna keep harping, but does this include any of these programs in regards to this, for the reading at Birch Grove? That's twenty percent of the, our, 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 you know, resident experts.
Is that considered program reductions?
Twenty percent of the resident experts at Birch Grove of those thirty-one, that's twenty percent. What was being asked in addition to this is zero, right? Twenty percent. I, I, I just, I, I, I can't wrap my mind around that, was none, none of that was put into the budget. And we talked about these huge increases of the waves of children coming into Birch Grove. How is that? Uh, I don't know, um, is that more or less a question, or is it just a statement again, I guess, for the third?
Well, I, I guess we can ask, why, why wasn't that a consideration, uh, when you were creating your budget? I mean, are you seeing, uh, that it's not a need or not, uh, tell me what your thinking was when you created?
Well, I mean, um, right now, you've noticed that we have hardworking staff who are sustaining the students, uh, you know, uh, needs through a variety of program elements that were described in an E L A presentation, or some of you didn't see, but, you know, we have a, a complex program. Again, uh, because of the efforts of the staff. Because of the efforts of the staff and to use the example of ELA. Uh, Dr. Daily Burns, who just recently, she's your doctor, so congratulations to her. They have created a very powerful program that is having deep impacts on students' needs. And that is evidenced in power performance on things like the kind of, uh, scores and things like that. When we ask about something like intervention. You know, having another interventionist allows us to serve more students. But we're balancing that against all these other reductions. So we can put anything, you can direct me to put anything that you want in the budget. In a year like this, um, it was more sustaining the programs we have that have been extremely successful. But it didn't seem like the directive I was getting at any point was, you know, was that we'd be adding a lot of positions. So. You know, there's a lot of efforts and a lot of extensive programming provided for those children to have, um, their reading needs. Get, you know, met. But, um. You know, I can, you can add a hundred seventy thousand positions if you want. It did not seem like that was an option, and we have programs that are successful right now. We can, we can add more with more interventionists for sure.
The one was a reading teacher, wasn't even interventionist, actually a reading teacher, so. And, you know, just, I, I hear these high numbers that are coming in and. I just, I just still go back, I mean, I appreciate the answer, but I'm just still, uh, right now sitting here and just think. If Tom Swanson asked for these positions, it boggles my mind. Why he would ask them if we feel that these programs are running well without these people to add, ask them, so.
Wants versus needs. These asks, are they wants or are they needs?
Their wants, you know, they're just, uh, look, when you're talking to educators about children, you know, and, um. You can, you know, if you have an opportunity to increase the number of educators here for any, any place, you're going to. You know, have, um. You know, uh, more success with smaller class sizes of science than they would with big class sizes of science. So. Somebody asked me, you know, can we add ten science teachers and have, you know, amazingly optimal class size? I have to balance that against the needs of the entire district. So, you know, that's my job is to try to balance the request against the needs of the entire district. And so we can't add those and not have that impact more of what's on the other end. And I have to make a value judgment at some point in consultation with the people that I work with to decide what the lesser evil is. And in this case, not, you know, hiring those right now is, you know, is a lesser evil of doing so. And then impacting class sizes in the other grades, because that reading teacher is not a classroom teacher per se, and that would mean. You know, you'd be impacting class sizes because we would not, we'd have to reduce one to get one in this current situation that we're in. So, uh, I do pay a lot of attention to the experts and we, we plan accordingly based on the resources we feel like we can reasonably request. This year, you'll notice that the request is this high and has never been before. Because six point five one percent of this budget is tied up in things I cannot impact. I can't change the bargaining things and the, you know, transport and things like that. And I try, I work real hard for the board to try to balance. So it's because in my estimation, you would have a far greater negative, you know. We'd have a greater negative impact by then terminating others because we are.
Um, I can just suggest that we amend the motion just to. Uh, because I know that you said what you said, Dr. Will, and I appreciate it. And again, we're not in the conversation where we could add things at this point, but can we? When you go to the table, can, can I amend the motion to say add consideration for the reading, the word BGP? And then if he says no after he's considered it.
You're making a motion.
Can I amend? That's what I'd like to do.
Do we have a second, second to amend? Discussion on amending her motion to include a consideration for this.
No, but I'm not done with discussion on the first.
I'll table it if you want. I'll table it. I'll table it. I'll table it.
Okay. Okay, all right, nevermind.
So my question on the whole motion and second and what we're going to vote on. We're not binding anything. We're just directing him to work a little bit more on this one.
On this, correct. Okay, so what this motion is. And Jen, my interpretation, please correct me if I'm mis. But this motion is to direct Dr. Will to look at this one particular. With a focus on potentially adding back, uh, programs if possible. Then there will be communication on getting the temperature of the council. This motion is not binding. Next week, the hope is he'll come back with something that's a little bit, that's closer. That we then have a bridge discussion on, and we'll go on, but it is not, you, you. No vote that we're doing tonight is going to walk out of here with the budget. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So the, the previous directive was to generate that option eight seven nine. With the restoring of staff and the removing of the programs. So this directive is to generate an eight point seven nine that restores programs but doesn't touch the staff. Because.
No.
I just want to clarify, I guess what I, eight point seven nine did.
So we're just talking about the original.
Superintendent generated eight point seven nine budget that restores.
Disregard my comments. No, the, the original, the original was to start from a budget that didn't, that didn't eliminate any staff, right? So that's the eight point seven nine. But we'd, we'd like to maybe talk about considering some of these program reductions as well.
So. That would mean that there is, there are fixed.
I would like you to add that code.
Dollars here, so that, that equates to, I don't know, three seventy-nine to four hundred thousand. I would have to find that elsewhere. Those are the programs that I took from, that we. You know, felt like they could be taken from. So if I'm looking elsewhere here, there's not a whole lot of elsewhere for program to look for that kind of money. Programs don't make up the majority of your budget, people do. So I, it's kind of like I've got, these are program reductions. I don't have a lot of other programs to look at. I will do whatever you want me to. But are you opening up the door to more staff reductions then to make this more of a, something closer to the, you know?
I think, I, I think that's tricky. I mean, I, I see where Brian's coming from too, like. TMS asked for a social work, thirty-one positions, and they've got the highest rates of self-harm that they've ever seen. I think there's so many important positions that we're not tackling here. I don't know that we're going to be able to tackle them all. And then I don't know how we pick from, like, we haven't even dived into some of these positions, like, for instance, the THS science. You know, in one, we're taking away one, in another, we're taking away two. You know, Mark Rudy told me on rounds night that, that the lowest person might be one of our teachers who has a chemistry cert, which. We don't have a lot of teachers that can teach chemistry. It's already a class taken by many large size. It's a requirement in college for a lot of professions, like pharmacy, clinicals, et cetera. I don't know. I don't, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can. I think we have to stick to no staff reductions. We have to start there. We could talk now about which, the, the program reduction here that means the most to me is co-teaching program. I don't understand how we don't put that in for thirty K when we're seeing that it's improving our test scores and it's. Vital to special education, which is one of our highest. Budget items always, and will only grow the more students don't get what they need in our regular programming. Um, I don't know if there's anything else in this list. So maybe we add back in the, the co-teaching and then we consider. One of Brian's reading requests. Do we get that specific?
Let me, let me get over to Bill.
How, how many? When we say no teacher reductions, we're saying that we're going to fill the teaching positions that are currently budgeted. That might not be filled right now. Is, is that the assumption?
Right.
What if? We don't fill those positions because they're currently not filled? And roll that money into bringing back some of these programs that are cut? And I think on paper, it shows, yes, a staff reduction. But it's currently an unfilled position that we're getting by with at this point.
We do that. That's, that's what the superintendent's proposed budget does. There are positions that are presenting that we are not filling.
But what Bill's saying is out of these, out of these positions you've taken out, there's a couple that. An actual head doesn't sit in right now because of a retirement, et cetera.
I don't know who those would be at this point.
Right.
Right now, I don't even know if that's true of any of them at this point right now for those.
But like, for instance.
So we, we accounted for a certain number of retirements. I can. Put any number of retirements you want in there as a number, but if we don't hit that number, then we're short on the budget and that's, we got a shortage this year of funds. I just, I want to be careful because I, I wanted, I wanted, I mean, I need to effectively, um, communicate that. That, you know, I don't have a lot of wiggle room if I'm not, there's not a lot of other programs to go to. So if that thirty thousand is going to be put back for co-teaching. That, where, where will I get that? Um, it could happen, you know, I could take a physician or part of it, a point five of something. I don't want to do that. But I can, you know, but there's, you see, your program budget is very limited compared to your personnel budget. It's a tiny fraction of that. And we don't, you know, we can't sell off anything here to increase our capital or, you know, increase our funds. So. I, I will do everything you want me to do, but, um, you know, that's going to come from somewhere else than that. They might not like, you know, two days from now.
So let me, let me clarify my point, um, just for sake of numbers, because it's easy for me. If, if we have budgeted. Ten teachers, but. There's, there's only nine teachers physically there because we need to hire another. There's actually nine teachers doing the job, but there's ten teachers budgeted. Why can't we take that, that teacher that's not there, that money? That we're currently living without that teacher and roll it into funding some of these programs?
Well, so you're going to take that same money and put it into a program.
Correct.
That means that we would just take away more of those positions, because right now. That, that's a fixed set of money. So that person not coming back means something doesn't come back. Some program, some thing, some section. So we would fund, you know, an material item in lieu of the program that they taught or something. We kind of already do that within the superintendent's proposed budget, taking account of the people that are retiring and. And so we're doing what you're saying, but what you're saying is anything that comes up additional to that as a retirement, don't restore the position and spend it on a program.
Well, how are we living right now without? These, these positions that are empty.
Long-term subs, they come in and they do it, right? So there, there, it's not that that class just disbanded. You know, and we sent the kids and, you know, off and said, you no longer have, we have the LTS is doing those. Like in social studies, you know, they're teaching the class currently.
So I'm sure it's in the, in the, your budget somewhere. What's the comparison of what a long-term sub costs us as opposed to what's in the budget amount for having a teacher there?
Well, and, and we do that. That's when you're looking at hiring someone, you're looking at hiring an MA three or MA seven, like a step. So somebody retires at a higher step, we do already calculate in the differentiations. I just want to be clear about, you know, what I can and can't do, what I will and won't be able to generate, you know, in a short span of time. Plus, the, the other piece of it is that is already accounted for in our retirements. We do that. We took the differential between the MA, you know, MA sevens and. And the higher paid, and we took that out of the budget already. So we do that kind of thing, but you can do things like you can estimate more retirements. You can say, look, Walt, I want you to do this, um, with seven retirements. You know, but if we don't get those seven retirements, now we're short.
I know we're, uh, Janet mentioned going through this list here, this eight point seven nine percent one. And then we have that technology fund. Could you not use this for this Birch Grove iPads and the Promethean boards I had emailed in? Um, the Promethean boards, I know there was a response in regards to that there would be maintenance costs in regards to those already. So if we're already spending money, why don't we use the technology funds? Save that maintenance money. And outright just buy these with the funds that we already have sitting in an account.
You can use the, I think you're referring to the educational reserve fund, the one percent fund.
Yeah, that technology.
You can do that.
Thousand, yes.
But, um, that fund, you, you're, uh, I think the conversation in the past has been being careful about how much you take from that fund because you may need it in the future to offset things like special education. That can also be used for capital expense that, you know, you may also want to use it for. So you can. The other piece to that is if you. You do it, um, you know, it may lower the budget this year, but if that need is still there next year, then it looks like.
Well, this is probably, I mean, this thing's last many years, the red thing boards.
No, but it's.
You're talking about like, you, if we need it in the future, I think the future is now. These people are asking us to stop kicking the can down the road. We have the money somewhere. Let's. Use it to restore, because we're already going to have to spend money on maintenance, right? So I'm just like offsetting a, an expense that we already have the dollars today. So such a slight statement on that.
Interpret. And, and, and I apologize because I'm probably not having a great job here of getting effectively communicated, but. One version of kicking the can down the road would be taking money that you, you know, from, from an account like that, paying for something, and then the next year needing a replacement cycle. Because it, it's just going to cost you, you're going to have a bigger climb next year if it's not in the budget now, because you'll have to budget for it next year anyway, right? If you have a replacement cycle. But we can take anything, you know, if the board wants to take more from the educational reserve fund to offset this very near's budget, in fact, we certainly can. That has been discussed in the past. My, my feeling from, what I was hearing from the board in conversations in FSC and otherwise was that we did not want to run the ERF down too low. We also have a budget year right now where, you know, we're kind of skirting right at that level, just above, you know. Zero, and, uh, if we hit, get hit with big special ed impacts, we might have to dip into the ERF. To offset those impacts. So, you know, that's something that we want to have some funds available or at least enough to, you know, to respond to something like that if you needed to. So those are the conversations that have happened.
Alright, well, alright, well, I just, I, I thank, thank you for the information, but I, I still think it's a waste of money if we're going to be putting. Maintenance into these old boards just to scoot by and buy them next year. If we have the money already, it just seems wasted money in my view.
So Brian, we've got.
Because the month, the, the answer's in, in the portal, actually.
We, we have a motion on the table. You do want to amend the motion to include that?
To use the funds? Or is that a separate motion?
Well, we'd have to, uh, the, the board would have to evoke to use that, but at this point, we're directing the superintendent, uh, a direction we'd like to investigate.
Yes, I'd go like that and investigate.
So if you want it, and I guess Dr. Will, in a minute after you're done with this, would like to get your thought on. On the motion as it stands. Just as part of the step, but, but if, like you're saying, using that, using the ERF. To pay for this particular item is, is important.
Yes.
Then you make a motion to amend the current motion. We stick that in another vote.
I'd like to make a motion to use the ERF funds to take care of the wide item of the BGP iPads slash Promethean boards.
We'll, we'll second that.
Yeah, the, the BGP iPads and Promethean boards.
So there should be some, should be some savings, some on another line, even though to offset whatever those maintenance costs was going to be to repair the boards that are currently not. Uh, operate, uh, or up the park, so, so whatever that dollar amount is, it'll be moved around.
On the motion to amend it to, what Brian said there, discussion.
This, this, um, those are a reduction to that budget, so taking them from the ERF. Means you're, you're putting a little bit of money back in and.
Well, it's going to come out of the fund that's already sitting somewhere else. It's not tax dollars we're asking, we're not asking for any more tax dollars. We're actually saving.
So, um. Does that mean with those funds that you were, that you use from the ERF, do you want me to restore some?
Yes, co-teaching.
Okay.
Amendment number fifteen. I'm going to have a motion on the table, but pretty from the ten, so I don't want to make a.
Go ahead, Jane. I want to vote on this amendment.
See, I feel like we're going down the rabbit hole a little bit of, let's add this, let's add that. So I, I, I almost go back to, I almost say, let's go back to. Original motion with a, with a.
A, a stimulation, you know, can we do this? I don't know what the verbiage is for that, but it seems like now we're, you know, and so.
Eight, seven, nine, you know, with the.
So let's, let's vote on the amendment.
Okay.
Okay. So, what's your amendment? The amendment is to amend Jen's motion with Brian's recommendation, use the ERF funds to pay for. The, uh.
So.
iPads and Promethean boards.
Yeah, I have, I can read what I think you've got here. Motion to direct the superintendent to generate an eight point seven nine budget that restores programs and to investigate the use of ERF fund to offset costs of the BGP iPads and Promethean boards and restore co-teaching?
So that's. The vote on the table is to amend Jen's motion to that. the vote on the table is to amend Jen's motion to that. Jayden?
Aye.
Okay.
Rainey?
Nay.
Brian?
I'd love to make a motion to add, I think Dana was saying about the reading program. She got silenced on that motion earlier.
Yeah, go on. Probably what you want to do is go around on this either.
That's an aye.
Brian?
Nay.
All right. There. Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, aye. One, two, three, day. All right, motion passes to amend the motion to what he just read. All right.
I put the motion to that, and we're in discussion.
All right.
We're in discussion.
Yeah, we're in discussion. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to extend past ten o'clock.
Seconded. Discussion. Okay. Jenkins?
Aye.
Rainey?
Nay.
Dan?
Nay.
Bill?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Six, aye, two, day. All right, so going back.
What you're doing, really, you're using ERF to co-teach. Doing this, so that's essentially been contacted.
So we are currently in discussion on the completed amended motion. Any more discussion? Just a point of clarification. So next week, we'll be able to say, okay, this didn't work out the way we thought it might, we can.
Nay.
Nay. So that makes plenty.
Yeah, that makes complete sense. So thank you.
The other decision.
I don't see about getting so these. Like the exploration of the reading program to ensure that these experts that ask for all of these reading resources.
Have any grants?
Uh, that are not being fulfilled into the budget or explored better.
Could we explore some grants?
Yeah, I might want to respond. The, um, yeah, there are, when grants come up, I apply, we apply for them. You know, for social work, we got one, so that's part of, you know, when they apply, we we do write to read, we apply. We got seventy thousand. So grants do come up and we do apply. I don't, I can't really tell you if there's gonna be any for those specific positions or if there's anything we could be able to do together. But we would try, if they can, for sure.
Further discussion on the motion, I'll just. All right, done. Can we revisit the exact motion when we're.
I'm just, you're, you're on the same page.
So, Dr. Will, we are, before we vote, if you read the motion as it stands, would be successful amendment.
So motion direct the superintendent to generate an eight point seven nine budget that restores programs and to investigate the use of the ERF fund to offset costs with BGP iPads, Promethium boards, and restore co-teaching.
All right. Thank you, sir. Jenkins?
Aye.
Rainey?
Nay.
Brian?
Aye.
Dan?
Nay.
Bill?
Aye.
Nay. Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
All right, one, two, three, four, five. Two, three, motion passes, Dr. Will. Not that your marketing orders is far as that. Now, next question. Do we still want a special meeting on Tuesday? To discuss whatever temperatures are in town council, to go further into the details of Dr. Will's head.
Motion first, go ahead, Bill.
I was, I was gonna, is this time for discussion or time for motion?
Well, if you motion it, we can discuss.
Go ahead, you were gonna motion it.
Motion for a special meeting.
Second.
On Tuesday, then.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I think it's important to have this meeting because that's gonna be dependent on me personally, how I vote on Tuesday, based on what? Town council? What type of your town council is? Let me ask this, Dr. Will, can you support a special meeting or just?
I'll do whatever you want, yeah. The vote, what I recommend is we put that in the books now, and you can always cancel it.
Okay.
But we want to get that scheduled tomorrow so we have it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
It might end up being at a different location.
Do whatever is necessary. Nice. Jenkins?
Aye.
Rainey?
Epstein?
Brian?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I mean, all right, Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, Dr. Will, if you would set that up. Would certainly impression you. I'm adjourned. Very good. Seconded. All right, discussion. Well, Jenkins?
Aye.
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Right, right.
Motion. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.